This conference will now be recorded.
We've got a policy, Pelican's got a policy, but you all evidently have a prohibition that doesn't allow.
From a business perspective, like on our sidewalks.
We might want to talk about that because there are people driving golf carts on the sidewalks.
And in.
And Lee County, and they won't do anything. No, no, here's our problem. Our paths are designated as paths, not, they're not prohibitive of golf carts. That's our problem.
All right, if we can have everyone take a seat, please, we can get the meeting started.
Fifteen minutes on HOA.
So I, I have a three o'clock call the meeting to order. If everyone just would please also make sure if you've got a cellphone, you can just turn that off or put it to silent, please. Let's all rise from this.
Don't even get me started on this.
Well, and I do want to take just a second. I'm not sure if everyone is aware, but in around August of this year, I was diagnosed with throat cancer. So I spent several months in chemo and rehab, radiation therapy. And luckily with COVID and everything else and us being virtual, it really didn't impact me that much from a board's perspective. But did have my final scan today and I was cleared to 100% cancer-free, so. So I thought I would share that because I know some of you have been, some of you knew, some of you didn't. But everyone's just been so supportive and I appreciate all the support through the process. It definitely was humbling, but very appreciative and I feel like a big weight has been lifted. So just thought I would share. Okay, now down to business. Let's move into audience public comments.
Yes, sir. And if I may, could we have a motion in a second to allow Mr. Guy to attend and conduct business remotely?
Yep.
Go move.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, Mr. Banks.
I.
Mr. Geppert.
I.
Mr. Tinkle.
I.
Ms. Walsh. Four oh, motion passes.
And Chris, will you just take? Yep. Before we get into public comment, will you just take role for the record?
Okay, and for the record, Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. Geppert.
Yes.
Mr. Guy.
Yes.
Mr. Tinkle.
Yes.
Ms. Walsh.
Yes.
Hey, all members are attendance four, four in physical, one remote.
And we have Tony Pierce here, District Council, and Chris is here. And do we have, do we have engineering on today?
Yes, yeah, representatives on from Tetra Tech.
Okay, great, thank you.
And we do have only one speaker card, Mr. Joe Schofield from Pelican Preserve, representing. You will pass on that? Okay, well, we have no public speakers with the card. Or is there anybody online that has a comment or would like to make a comment during public input?
Chris, no faxes or emails or texts other than that?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, well, let's, let's move on to our staff reports. Do we want to start with Tony with our district attorney?
Yeah, if I may, Chairman and members of the board, in your packet is a draft of proposed amendments to the permit criteria manual. And I know it's thick in the agenda packet, but I thought it'd be appropriate for the board to see what the current version, how that reads and the red line version of any proposed changes. The red line version does not include the appendix. The appendix has various graphics and documents, but the focus of the group was to work on the text and there was some great input from Chris, Leslie, Danny, Brian, and not sure who else. Everybody worked on it to provide those suggestions. So I don't know if I, I don't feel I need to go through it line by line, page by page. I think it's pretty much speaks for itself. If the board has any questions as to why some changes were made, I would be glad to address them, but some of it was just cleanup and some of it was substantive. It all started with the discussion with regards to the downspouts, but I'll walk through, I'll think, I'll just do some of what I think are the substantive matters. And for some crazy reason, the page on the draft didn't come out, but we have agenda pages.
Tony, a question.
Yes, sir.
I was, I went through this thing and it drove me crazy. We put the current in the back.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I started looking at and I go went through it and then I came back here and I thought, what the heck are they doing? So we put the current in the back and we put the proposed changes in front of it.
Yeah, that's right. I did A and B. That's right. I tried to find the front, like the page nine.
Okay.
He's a proposer. Page 20, agenda page 22, and it talks about applicability. As we discussed, it applies to any improvements, development, redevelopment. Because this is a document also. I'm always amazed how in southwest Florida, there's redevelopment, demolition, reconstruction after multiple four periods of time. So hopefully we can capture it. And then we picked that up also in rest of number two. We also talked about, we added, now this was a staff suggestion with regards to the after the fact approval or applications. It's a double the application fee twice because it's just a lot more work to do that. Also put in, you know, criteria for strict conformance, how construction is supposed to occur. And again, we just talked about the process. And we talked about a temporary basis of using a district facility. We just codified that, asked for a license agreement. And also said that we're not going to take any applications in unless you have a pre-application meeting. I think that's significant because we've had a rash of people just sort of thumbing their nose at the whole process. And so it's like, hey, you know, you're not going to submit if you don't have a pre-application. Then we're going on to agenda page 26 again, just talks about the plans, all the components. We have to have everything before, you know, the review begins. We just don't want to get everything piecemeal. Chris and Danny talked about the digital copies and the number of copies that we need. One other aspect that we, I don't know if we really had before.
You're on a roll.
I know, I'm sorry.
I'm used from doing this stuff years ago up north. Up north, when we did this for communities, it was the entity like the CDD's responsibility to incur the cost of, let's say, reviewing plans and specifications and that type of stuff. Okay? In other words, there was not a dollar value that was sent back to the developer XYZ comes in and says, hey, I want to do a hundred acre development here. And here's the plans and you're going to review them for free, which was basically the way it was done. But when it crossed the line into construction and the review of the plans and specifications, bid documents, or the plan specifications and the construction inspection, there was a fee. I couldn't find that. Are we doing that?
Construction?
Yeah. Are we doing this all for free?
No, the application, I mean, once again, I didn't go into the table that talks about the rates and fees. That's part of the appendix. But the application process, there are charges.
Well, that's my question. When we go out and let's say Arborwood, phase three, right now is a good example. We're doing work out there. They got 146 lots or something. We had a schedule that if you were zero to 50, 50 to 100, 100 to 200, 200 to 500, 500 to 1,000 lots, or whatever. There was a price that you had to pay per lot that went into account to pay the engineering fees and the inspection fees. And then at the end of the job, if there was a surplus left over, then you've got that back.
Yes.
If there was a overrun, you paid it. Do we have that to where we're not subsidizing this development?
It's in the appendix. And again, it didn't change the appendix. And I believe, I'll double check if I believe. Since it's part of the appendix at the present time, to amend that appendix, you need to amend the rule.
Well, my question is.
I changed the language to say we can change the rates, fees and charges by a resolution, which is a quarter, 10 day advertising process. We don't have to go through the whole rule development.
I'm just trying to find out that we are these people for the costs that we're incurring or close to the costs that we're incurring to inspect their work.
I think the fee right now is probably relatively small. I don't think it covers all the costs.
The application doesn't, but what happens is once that application is put in, which is the plan and plat review, you go to actual cost of the service provided, meaning when.
After, after, construction and after.
Well, that's where it stops because once there's conveyance and it belongs to us, that stops. But during construction and inspections, if it's $85 an hour, we're paying the engineer. When we get the engineer's invoice, we pass that directly back to the developer.
But before that, it's just a allocated amount, so many, so much per lot.
Right.
And what, and if you go to agenda page 25, it wasn't clear because we do a fee schedule, I think in the appendix, it wasn't clear any other process for changing it. It just says public notice and hearing, which again, if it's part of the rule, the only way you could change it would be the rule amendment. But five says the fee schedule for the review of plans and submittals, and I can add in construction, be those as adopted from time to time by supper resolution of the board, and that just requires 10 days notice.
Okay, well, I'm just, I guess I'll just ask the staff, are we getting sufficient funds in for both what I would call the design and the construction phase to where we're not big time subsidizing this stuff?
Typically, the, again, when they submit it, that fee probably just covers the review, but we bill the engineer for actual time.
So we, so we don't lose on the backside.
We use our bill from the engineer and it's a direct pass through. Where there's a weak point in that is once we take possession or conveyance, like we have parts of Pestoia and they go in and do a final lift after we own it.
It's all our, all ours.
Well, I guess what we could do in that case, we could ask for a fee deposit for that final lift. And I'm not sure if my fees, my charges for review are included in the fee schedule.
It should be.
They don't come straight through. And you're right, Tony, typically it's the plat and that, but you get involved in a lot more with follow-up letters and comments.
I think that, that needs to be corrected then.
I think what we could do since this, what we're proposing is we noticed in the cover memo was that we advertised the rule amendment for March 4th because that has a 28 day lead time. And I can work with Chris and staff and Tetra Tech in the meantime to come up with a proposed revised rate schedule that we can have at the board meeting, like first meeting in February or second meeting in February and still have time to advertise for the March 4th meeting to adopt, you know, 10 days in advance, adopt, have the resolution ready to adopt the rate schedule.
But I'm not trying to generate revenue. What I'm trying to do is cover.
Actual costs.
Just cover costs.
And it would be legal. And also those, those costs that we bill the developer must be paid before it'll be put on the board agenda for conveyance.
So when we, when we look at establishing that rate structure, is it a set amount? Or could it vary depending on the complexity of the, of the review? That's what I'm trying to figure out. Do we have to establish the fee? Or say there is a fee and we'll let you know what that is based on.
You could do the actual, you can say actual cost based upon, you know, invoices submitted to the district.
That's what we do, yeah. Because you could get into some complexities that are.
Couple hundred units versus a couple thousand units.
Bingo. Some of them could be very simple, very small and very complicated on issues, but.
Just cover costs. I think we adopt the language that there is a fee associated and that fee will be determined based on.
Actual cost. It was two ways to do it. For example, in the planning context, Khyr County charges a flat fee per type of application. If it's a rezoning, if it's amendment, if it's a site development plan. City of Marco Island charges actual cost by their outside council and by. And by their engineer, outside engineer, so their outside cost you have to pay.
And just know that we may have to, we may have to give an estimate.
I don't want, I don't want to have to second guess what the order of difficulty of a job's going to be. You don't know that at the time. You might get into something and it's got like an FPL involved and it gets.
Yeah, okay, I agree with that. And I think we're.
We'll just have to come up with something for the board to discuss so we can advertise that and have that almost simultaneous with the rule.
Okay.
I know I am. It's, I'm just trying to think of the substantive matters. They're with me as I kind of go along. And it's been, and again, I apologize, stop me at any time if I go on past something that is of particular interest to the board. But one issue we, I know we got into utilities, Leslie and Kenny had some the issue about water for construction at page 51. We made that clear because of concern about use of non-podable water for certain instances. And also the notification process of the desired utilization for construction purposes. So that's on page 52. And so that's, I think that's Leslie and Kenny's suggestions.
I'd call Danny because some of this stuff, it kind of caught me by surprise. I thought some of the stuff that we were looking for and doing by this permit criteria was narrowed to a certain scope. Then when I started reading this, I thought, woo, this is a whole.
Oh, they looked at it. Yeah.
Tetra Tech has reviewed it. That was my point. I called up, I called up Tetra Tech and they said they, they were pretty satisfied, so.
Yeah, and it started off with just the downspouts and gutters.
Yes. I found out real quick, like it had gotten a lot farther than that.
Yeah, and page 59, the whole idea about what they can discharge into the wastewater system, that, that mirrors Lee County has, so it brings that current. That's where, Chris, I forgot who in your shop pulled that out. Austin? Yeah. And Austin pulled that out, I believe. And then we get to the, oh, their aeration equipment language at page 64, I think. That was the discussion that the board had where to place them out in the service. And hopefully that, and turning the volume of water, hopefully we capture that, Mr. Geppert. I think you mentioned that.
That's what I wanted to ask Bob, because we're going to be talking about pond aeration over here on this side of the, the tracks. Electrical power to these things is critical and it's going to be expensive. There's.
Fully enough to cost the Pelican.
Easily, easily. It, I read some stuff in here of using solar.
That's at page 64 and it said.
That's where I'm at.
Yeah. All lakes' aeration equipment is not solar powered, shall be provided with a dedicated electrical service.
But the desire is to go solar where possible or not?
We, we walked away from that.
It's just unreliable.
That's what really goes.
Say it again.
Reliability.
That's exactly my concern.
Okay, so the thought would be to cross out any reference, just so you have to have dedicated electrical services.
That would be to me, number one.
Okay, so I.
So we're going to sacrifice.
I questioned why it was in there, but it was just boilerplate for. I can just say all their aeration equipment shall be provided with a dedicated electrical service location. Okay, I'll leave her with all aeration equipment shall be, so I will strike out lakes where and is not solar powered. I'll cross those out. That's.
See, our problem on this is a lot of this stuff that we're going to be doing as it relates to aeration is not going to be associated with the new project, with the exception of maybe Worthington. This is going to be on our nickel. So I would think that whatever, we want to kind of recite what we're telling somebody to do, we do ourselves.
Yes. Or if they want to reconstruct or modify stormwater systems, wet retention lakes.
Okay.
Who's building Worthington?
Worthington?
I mean, is it Lennar? Is it another?
There's no development applications in yet.
Because I mean, Lennar, at least on new Pelican, we got all the electrical service for free. They just did it. We offered to pay.
Well, the Worthington property's only got what, two ponds? I think it's two ponds. So they're not, it's not that big of a, big of an item. Our biggest exposure gateway is the 45 or 50 ponds that have nothing that we got to do, start from scratch.
That's our responsibility.
And we just got to have to figure out how to do it. And we're just going to get FPL in here and figure out how to do it.
And run lots. And that's my only concern is, you know, direct connect is, is the most reliable. Solar might make some of these, you know, easier, maybe even cost effective. But if, if the maintenance, the cost to maintain and other things, I think this is where I just want to be careful that maybe we reserve the right to do. Maybe there's a primary, but we reserve the right to.
Yeah, give us the alternative.
And we could always come in and say, hey, look, we can make a motion that we're going to, for the special case. But Tony, I would just have you maybe at that point of consideration, is there?
Shouldn't submit alternative power sources.
Primary is.
Based on current conditions or something along those lines.
Primary is dedicated hardware.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because you never know, they may come up with some.
Who knows? I mean, we might find some of these at the cost to run line may just not be cost effective.
Those, those were the things I found.
Yeah. And in that regard, Flavia, Bob, Bill, do you have any questions? And then also Stephen, from a, from an engineering perspective, are you comfortable with, with the changes as they are today or any modifications?
Danny's on board.
Well, this is Danny with Tetra Tech. So Stephen is, Stephen's on daddy duty for the next two weeks. So we're, we're good. I mean, obviously, as Tony had mentioned, the, you know, the initial start of this was, you know, was associated with the downspouts and those improvements. And then I believe at one of the previous board meetings, it, it came up to, you know, review the rest of the language. And that's where a lot of this other was, was inserted. And we, we've read through everything. We're, you know, we're good with it as, as it sits.
That we have omitted either on accident? Is there anything that, that we should be including that we have not that, that jumped out at you?
No, no, I will say, I mean, as far as the fees go, I was just reading through what the current latest adopted, you know, has. And it does say that from time to time, the fees would be reviewed and may be adjusted. So we can certainly, you know, sit down and talk about the best way of, of how to do that. There's just been, you know, there's been discussion over the years as to the best way, whether it's, you know, linear foot of, of a pipe and you put a cost to review on that, which I'm not a fan of because it doesn't really, you know, quantify the magnitude. But I think, you know, like, like Ed's saying, if you're truly recouping your costs of what it costs for us to do our job and developers paying that and you're not in it to make money, he's just simply, that's cost for being borne by the developer. And that's, that, that I believe is essentially what's being done now. And I think that's working, but we can certainly sit down and kind of look to see if there's a better way of doing that. And then like Chris said, talking more about that post, because the permit criteria really doesn't address that at all. Final lift and those sort of things.
Yeah. And what I would say too is, you know, I think it's this board's opinion that we would do periodic reviews of the permit criteria. So, you know, I would just, you know, look at your staff and say, we would expect, you know, periodic recommendations from our engineer to, to amend or enhance or add to our permit criteria in addition to what staff and this board would be recommending. So I would just, let's, let's plan on that being a practice moving forward.
Definitely. Go back and review these legal related expenses. To me, that's got to be added.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. Okay.
And the downspout language is on page 7. I think that's what started it all. The genesis, that's the genesis page. I think that's almost verbatim what it was.
And this is the, I, I completely understand. And I think Pelican has done a great job of implementing this as mitigation to erosion and other things. Is, what is our expectation? Because I'm not clear on this on any. I know, you know, I'm new, but at your, things that we, that we put in here are things that we, there may be some retro activity on, on our behalf. This is one, aeration, we could chew that. But when you look at downspouts and some of the other things, well, that's a.
You're going to have to get into covenants.
And you're talking about bull in the ocean a little bit. So I want to be very clear on what the expectation here is. What's good for the goose should be good for the gander. But this is bigger than breadbasket in my opinion. I agree.
Doug, if I can, the way this approached in Pelican was HOA by HOA. The ponds group made a presentation to the boards saying, if you get your residents to sign up the downspout, we will cover the cost of paying those downspouts and running them into the pond, one of those homes that have ponds. And then we got the bubble up boxes, double wall piping, the concrete apron, all that. We had about 90% compliance.
And then. How'd you get around easements? How'd you get around easements?
Never came up.
No, I think it did at the beginning, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, it wasn't ever a hundred.
Yeah, see, if you've got covenants like our community, some of the neighborhood associations have covenants that five feet on either side or six and a half feet, a feet or seven, whatever the number is, on either side of the center line is dedicated for utility easement. If that's the case, then you've got a chance. You got a chance.
We went down the center line on.
But if it doesn't have an easement between lots, you've got a problem.
No, this issue, I think, rose about three or four years ago, if I'm not mistaken. And at the time, we viewed the master covenant, reviewed the various neighborhood covenants, as to ability of the association. You have easements provided to the district, to have easements over the open area, not where they're shot, that's the language. I'm sort of paraphrasing. In their covenant, they have language that said, open, there are no structures, there are easements for various entities. And I'll have to go back and look at that. Well, I was comfortable with that.
Well, the one thing that's, we've had.
Hey Danny, Danny, can you call me?
Sounds like we're going to get a dog.
You're concerned about.
We've had several ponds done in Gateway Greens. And we've done it with the, the bubble up boxes that people would be able to connect to. And I could probably count, in fact, I know I can count on one hand, the number of people that have connected into those boxes with trains.
But you put on the resident, on the owner's shoulders to connect, right? Okay. So I think that's where, that's where the.
We, we paid for that.
So probably ask me a couple of questions, just, just so I'm clear. And I don't want to take a whole lot of time on this, but when, so the, what you were saying is if the homeowner paid for the downspout.
Yeah, the HOA supported getting the downspout.
Then what, what did you, what did Pelican provide and what was the depth? So you have to bury those.
We went from between the two homes. Yeah, we just, whatever gravity would.
Yeah, whatever slope you could get.
We trenched it out. The contractor trenched it out, trenched it back to the ponds. And again, we're only talking about.
So you're just like a trench, not, you're not running.
You're going to put a perforated or a non-perforated.
Non-perforated, double.
Non-perforated, double wall pipe, run it down to the bubble.
All connections are screwed together.
To the bubble up, but, and then to the, down to the pond.
But here's, here's your problem.
So you're not, you're not connecting downspouts to, to a central, so bubble ups and then perforates and then.
It gets worse than that. It's no tiki, no laundry. If you don't have a gutter, you don't have a downspout.
Right.
And if you don't have that, we don't do it.
How many of those do we really have?
In Gateway Greens?
We had a lot.
In there, everyone.
Well, we had a lot at first.
In the front and in the back, not on the sides.
And that, that was my biggest thing with Magnolia. We went out and put all those boxes when we had nine homes out of 60 that had gutters.
What we have.
From those, they actually connected one.
Okay, so here's, here's what, yeah. And I want us to revisit how we're going to connect. To me, going bubbler, perforated, may seem more, more logical to go downspout connect to, you know, direct and then push it out that way.
That's the way it should.
So you, because when you perforate, you, there's saturation and you're not guaranteed. So there's some things there. But what I would maybe look at from a staff perspective, one, is that something we feel, I'm sure we haven't budgeted for a resource to do that because we haven't scoped it out. But if we take Pelican's approach and we look at it from an HOA perspective and we're going to maybe look at HOA's one that have gutters at X amount percent, which ones have had the most, which ones have the most lakes, the most erosion, especially ones that we have spent money on to revitalize those lake banks, might be some good starting points.
The sales job that was done within Pelican with our members were because no two communities in Pelican were built the same with regard to gutters. Some had it in a home price, the next street didn't. I don't know.
If you take care of the problem of the pointed discharge from the, the downspout.
Correct.
To the water, you're going to have a much more better chance of getting the homeowner to invest in putting in the gutter to get it.
Exactly. And the homeowner, well, the homeowners.
I certainly.
Tony did that on average about $1,250 per home to put in downspouts or gutters. The pond group paid $2400.
But you're saying these are, these are homes that didn't have gutters or downspouts?
Some did, some didn't, but the people that didn't.
If you have a gutter, your, your cost is minimal, almost like.
Minimal.
It's just.
The cost is getting the guy to show up.
12 foot, you know, and almost, we could almost cover that, you know, if we're going to do it, like, we're going to tie into it and do it from.
Just like myself, I would be, and in fact, I'm looking at, and this has been the problem I've had. I normally have to put in 75 millennial feet of gutter on this side and 75 feet of gutter on this side. I have to connect it down to the lake bubble up. And, and that's where the rubber meets the road because I've got roots to go through that are like this. Well, and I. If I only have to participate in putting the gutter, you got my attention.
If you get it at the bottom of your house and we take it, we took it and are taking it the rest of the way. And over to above that, we also added a center of home bubble up box. So if they had center of home downspout and gutter there, then we tapped into that. And at the time, Zika was the big concern. And we had a lot of homes that had standing waters between homes. So that was the thought process that drove us to go center of home back to.
Okay, so I think, Brian, here's what, you know, I think we, because I think this falls under your jurisdiction, right? Yeah. Congratulations, my friend.
He's been smiling the whole time.
So I think there's one, what's the, what's the cost not to do this? Uh, especially when we spent millions of dollars for lake bank restoration, uh, and we'll continue to spend money. So I think this is preventative maintenance. We could, we could probably come up with a, with a pretty, attractive value proposition and we could even piggyback on what Pelican does. I think what we need to scope it out a little bit. So if we can assess the, the neighborhoods.
Prioritize.
We need to prioritize and figure out where we would potentially start and then scope out execution. So is this worth, I mean, to me, if I were to do it, I would, I probably think it's internal staff. It would probably be cheap for us to do it ourselves, which means we'd probably have to hire somebody. Yeah, go ahead.
You can do like my neighborhood, bring out the front of the street, put the bubble box up by the valley gutter and close up that way.
Well.
Wait, hold, say that again, Brian.
What you can do is if they have gutters.
Yeah.
It's easier to trench from the gutter to the front by the road. You put a bubble up box by the mailbox or by the valley gutter.
Yeah. We've had a lot of people do that in ours.
I can't hear anything.
Uh, sorry, Bill.
I'm sorry, Bill. What I was saying is, is you can put from the drainings from the gutters and you bring it out to the road. And you put the bubble off box by the road. It's like a 12 inch and it bubbles up and it goes right down your valley gutter and goes back your stormwater. That prevents you from putting pipes in the pond.
Well, your, your big, your, a couple of things you have to do that. Obviously you've got to have elevation to be able to do it. That, that's the, the first one. But boy, it, it, it definitely solves a lot of problems because all those issues that we're talking about are putting it in that box have been alleviated because we're putting it in a storm sewer.
And you have utility easements pretty much.
Already in place.
90% of our homes have exactly what Brian has described, but it didn't do anything to preserve our banks. We did this over and above what is existing for the fronts to preserve the pond banks.
Your, your only problem, you get up to 22, 2400 square foot homes. That's a lot.
Well, what I would say is.
Very difficult to make that happen.
I don't want a solution today because I think that's probably, you know, up to Brian and engineering to come up with solutions. But, and I think having different solutions is, is the right approach. What I would say is, one, we need a budget for this. So we, we don't have any budget for this, this year. Uh, so we need to be looking at it, um, you know, for, you know, for 2022.
Pond by pond.
Or we fit, you know, we figure out a way to, you know, to pay for it this year.
Add it to the master infrastructure.
Right, yeah. Right. But I do think it's, it's either, it's an internal resource. If we need to hire someone, that's their, that's their job. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna knock this out in, in a year, two years and that this person's just gonna go out and, and work through it. There might be some equipment that we'll need. So I just need to scope it out so we can figure out if it, is it more cost effective to, to fund and execute internally, or I can't imagine a vendor would be any cheaper than what we could do.
Well, we could take and go to those ponds that are on the backside of our, uh, maybe in 30 years, we're gonna get to them. Go to the backside of our priority list on the ponds, look at those and find out which ones where this has an impact and could make the life of the pond go longer, the lake bank go longer. I'd rather implement it there, but like in mine, which has already been done with the, uh, Lake Bank erosion project. That's, that's kind of a little bit late.
Suggest a few ponds that I would at least think about experiment. Daniel's Preserve would be your first one.
Yeah.
Those two ponds are rather the worst we have. Their slopes are very steep to begin with.
Have them give us my ideas.
So I think, you know, just like anything else, we just need to work through this. We need to prioritize.
Yeah. And not to throw any cold water, and, and, but one thing that the important factor is whether or not those community covenants have, so I'll call blank in easements in favor of governmental body. That's, that's the issue.
Yeah.
And.
Well, as soon as, as soon as Brian prioritizes.
Identify.
Then I'll give that list to you and then you'll work through, you know, what are the easement constraints or what.
Well, if he pulls out the pond, pulls the pond, pull out the pond, pull out the, the plat, and you can see on those covenants that whether or not they got a five or six or seven foot, then you'll know just what you got.
But again, the difference in Pelican Reserve was the master declaration, the neighborhood covenants all had, uh, this easement over open space for various infrastructure.
So getting back to the whole, the whole purpose of this conversation is to say, okay, if we're gonna propose this for future, are we gonna retro? And I think the decision is we will retro, we're, we're gonna build a plan to retro. It'll probably be a phased approach. There's some, you know, we'll have to start, but we'll leave that in Brian's hands to come up with a, with a plan.
Move on and look at the next phase, the ones that are 60% now, maybe one pond, maybe you want to just see.
Part of your recommendation is, and, and your prioritization consideration are ponds that are upcoming.
Correct.
That we would incorporate that plan into.
Well, you can look at it that way or go to the ones that are way out at the end to tail end of the list and make sure they don't get any worse.
Well, let, let me throw out one other thing because this is one of the approaches we use, is we threw it, the offer out to everybody. And we told them, the first community that comes forward and volunteers to install their downspouts and things, that's our number one priority.
Well, I think we could do that in bounce. And what I would take.
We did that. And the other.
I would ask you, you've worked with Brian on.
Happy to. Doug, Doug Xander is even more familiar than I am, but I'll be happy to. The, the other thing was, is that the HOAs also had to sign up to do the yearly cleaning. If we put this infrastructure in, we, the Ponds Group, then it was a responsibility to HOA from their own end of the future to make sure they stayed clean.
When, when you say stay clean, what stayed clean? The point of contact from where it comes out of the downspout?
To the pond. They had to clean that out yearly.
They're doing that?
Yes.
So that's the point.
That's not an easy.
So, so you got, your prioritization becomes more complex when you're talking about severity versus, you know, um, restoration sequence, sequencing and preventative. So, you know, so just think through.
I'll reach out to you.
Yeah.
For, for.
And again, Doug, Doug Xander has been hands on the ground. He is even more familiar than I.
I'll reach out to Doug.
And the board had some discussion about that alternative with perforated pipe, might be used in some instances where you want that as an alternative possible. Some metal on page 67.
I think, I think we wait.
Stay with the double wall right now.
I, I, I would have gone with that till we started talking. Now the stuff that we're talking about, I don't know if I want to go that route.
I think that, that.
Perforated in Pelican clogged almost immediately.
That's the problem. That's, that's, that's my point.
That probably makes a double wall.
I think we should be a little more vague in the solution description to say that, you know, uh, downspout management is.
A conveyance, a conveyance will be provided. We don't describe.
We don't describe the solution because it could vary based on, based on the.
Well, the only reason that I would take exception to that is when you gave Lenora a choice, you got garbage. When we spelled it out, they were locked in to do it.
So what's spelled out is what's in the draft. I think that.
So maybe we can come up with a primary.
Well, if you're gonna do that, then you're gonna win more times than not, just go in with solid wall.
That's what I would.
And avoid perforated pipe. Because perforated pipe is a maintenance nightmare.
In this environment, it probably just can't.
That's, that's the, that's the preferred approach or, or, you know, whatever.
I would suggest leaving it as it is then and not even suggesting alternatives.
But take out the perforated.
Yeah, take it out.
It's not even in there.
It's not, yeah.
I know, I just, I'm sorry. I just heard the discussion about it. So I did not know.
And then, and then we, I think anything retro, we reserve the right to, you know, to augment the solution based on, you know, our ability to execute or whatever. Okay. All right. Uh, anything else for?
No, sir. Any other comments from the board on this? Then I'll make the changes. We'll, uh, advertise for March 4th.
Just made for interesting reading.
And, and this is an ongoing project in Pelican. It's far from completed. We're in Matarita at present time.
I'm glad it was.
I think, which brings me to a really good point. Do we have a standing permit criteria committee? Okay. Then I think we need to stand one up. And I think you guys can, you guys can flip a coin because I think between probably Bob and Ed.
Two of us can't.
Well, I know, I'm saying between you two, as far as having a, a board sponsor. You guys, you, if you want to arm wrestle.
Ed has far more expertise. I would have very comfortable anything to do with the downspouts and those things.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to overextend.
I might have expertise. You've got experience and I'll take your experience any day.
Okay.
Well, I would like the board as far as an action then, uh, on the recommendation request, I'll have the board adopt a motion uh, to authorize sitting a public hearing for March 4th, 2021, on the amendments to the permit criteria manual and conducting workshop, obviously just February 18th, with regards to proposed amendments, in case anybody else wants.
And I will volunteer every lead person.
Okay. Thank you.
When I read, that is.
For the permit criteria committee? Okay. And can you call Dougie and see if, if he'll.
Sure.
I move to motion, uh, Tony's recommendation.
We have a motion a second. Uh, Chris, if you'll call a vote.
Sure. Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. Geppert?
Yes.
Mr. Guy?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkle?
Yes.
Mrs. Walsh? Vote carries five to zero.
And also, Chris, if you, if you know of any residents that have expressed interest or you think might be good for the permit criteria, or Ed, you two.
I'm sorry.
What, and all of you guys, if, because you're also plugged into your community. If you have individuals that you'd like to recommend on the permit criteria committee, um, just send it over to Chris and then he'll coordinate with, uh, with Bob.
Even anybody else from the pond committee, not just, I think, I think actually that Bob reaching out to Doug, Doug's probably gonna find somebody else to.
Yeah, I'm sure he'll get some work.
Keep, keep in mind, guys, that with the exception of, uh, Worthington and the little five acre triangle down here and, uh, KO, whatever, KO pet date or whatever they call it. We, we don't have anymore.
See, right, well, no. And I really, I really respect that. But the only, the only reason I really was pushing for this is, is we, we plowed the field. We know how to do it right.
Make sure they do it right.
If we could be a template for somebody else, and you never know, maybe we'll expand. I don't know.
But, but again, I, it's also redevelopment. For example, say the commercial properties because they've been there 30 years, the infrastructure, they may want to change.
This is a one-time effort and ends it done. We don't do this every month.
Well, that's what I think, you know, yeah, it's.
And I do appreciate everybody's effort. I mean, it was a good effort by, as you said, Kenny, Leslie, Brian, Chris, Tetra Tech.
And it may be something we just have to that, to the Ponds Group. I mean, we do permit ponds and whatever committee, you know. Okay, moving on. Uh, so Tony, you're done. Uh, Danny, uh, district engineer.
You really slowed down our meeting.
I know.
3:40.
3:39, I went over by a minute.
Doug, I've got, I've got nothing, um, but I'll remain on for, uh, if anything pops up.
And Danny, I will say, uh, I had a conversation with, uh, with, uh, Chris and, and Laura, and it does seem like that there's the, the changes and modifications that, that you guys, uh, have done with Tetris and staff over the last couple of weeks has really been positive, uh, from what I'm understanding. We're, Chris is getting some really good reports coming in, uh, some of the invoicing, there's no issues there. So I just wanted to, you know, recognize both staff and our engineering partners kind of working together and, and, uh, solutioning. Um, so good job.
But, but before you leave, I called him before I came, but just for everybody's edification, uh, we're gonna be talking about the rate study here in about, uh, an hour or two or three. Page 12 of the, uh,
What book?
No, not the book. What do you call it? Yeah, the rate study, uh, analysis. There is a description of the projects that are in the capital reserve or the capital improvements projects. And I'd asked Danny, cause I mean, you sleep and you forget this stuff. We had a 12 inch irrigation main in here identified as a million bucks. I, I couldn't remember what it was. That was the irrigation line that goes up the FPL easement that feeds that 2 million gallon, uh, tank. Then the other one was the 12 inch FPL bypass force main, which for some reason I had 16, but that was the line that comes down the FPL easement to Griffin Drive. Then it changed over to, and we were going to put a parallel 20 inch to the treatment plant, which is only about, what, a thousand feet, Chris? As I understand it, those are incorporated in there and it's not a separate deal. So it's, it's inclusive of both of them. And while Danny was on, I don't want him to take off, but those, those, those two items, uh, did not appear on this capital reserve study and I wanted clarification of those.
Yeah. So I, I believe, and Chris can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, you know, when we did our preliminary opinion of costs, we included, so within the, uh, 12 inch irrigation, it would have included the items associated with that. When we did the, the force main, I'd have to go back and verify, but my memory had included everything associated with that. So the 20 inch and including the, the 12 inch within the FPL easement.
I didn't know if Danny was leaving. I wanted to get that clarified. That's all I.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I'll, I'll stick around and on the phone, but I'll, I'll, I'll probably, uh, hang up here in a few and then call back in from my cell phone for the. Great portion of it, but I'll try to be around.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just briefly, I can go back briefly. I apologize. Uh, I think, uh, we handed out, or Chris handed out, or sent to y'all the draft letter from Steve at Damsec to go to the city of Fort Myers on the amendment to the DRI.
Yes, saw that.
Uh, and I think it'd be important that the board, uh, take it, take action to vote.
Yes, or otherwise we'll delay this even further.
Okay.
Correct. So I think all, uh, just to suggest the only action needs to be taken is that the board concurs in the contents of the correspondence, so dated January 20, 2021, with the amendments that Mr. Damsec's gonna make to the district's facilities. And if necessary, uh, appropriate, have, uh, the chairman be authorized to sign any other correspondence along the same lines.
I'd make that motion.
And I'll second that.
Uh, we have a motion a second. Chris, can you call a vote?
All the vote. Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. Geppert?
Yes.
Mr. Guy?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkle?
Yes.
Mrs. Walsh? Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. And also, I've also had further communications with Sandy McLennan. She's bond counsel, Squire Sanders. She talked about the availability of utilizing the fire impact fees. And so I sent her some additional correspondence. I had a conversation with Mr. Geppert to, uh, make sure that what I was sending her was correct. As to the utilization, the contemplation would be that this proposed road, the district wouldn't own fee simple title, but would have an easement for ingress egress. It would benefit the phase one residents because it'd be, it could be utilized potentially as an emergency evacuation route. Also, this road would access district facilities and just connect to a district road, Prado Drive. So it does benefit the phase one. So, uh, I just, I sent her this graphic just so you have this for information as to, so she could better see, uh, the nature of the road relative to the other district facilities.
Have they ever been out? Look?
Uh, she's in Tamper's. I don't know if she's been out, but, uh, and, and so I just want to pass that along. That's the status. She's working on it and, um, I'll let the board know as soon as I find out.
I have one for Danny.
Go ahead.
Uh, at our, at our last meeting, uh, we had a discussion about the, uh, 16 inch force main, uh, bypass for the, uh, Griffin Drive, uh, roundabout. And we'd indicated, we kind of put that on a hold on the basis of the, uh, getting an easement from, uh, Rick Ryelinski at Holmontes and the developer there. And it's my understanding that, or it's my understanding that that's not an issue. We really need to get into that design so as to get that, uh, project expedited. So what do we need to do? Or is there anything holding us up from authorizing Tetra Tech to go ahead with that design that we put on hold last week?
So, um, you know, from, from our side, yeah, that was, um, and I wasn't on the call, but as I understand, that was, uh, tabled or, or pushed to either this meeting or the first meeting in February, um, while that was worked through. As, as I understand, you know, there aren't any issues, as far as, you know, people agreeing to the easement, but I think, um, uh, that, that time was to give staff, you know, a little more time to make sure that was solemn was gonna happen. But, um, we, we do need that authorization to be able to move forward with completing that design. So we're essentially on hold because we've got one option would be to what we had in our original scope to do the design to the south or to do the design to the north for the 16 inch and then cutting back through, uh, the, the easement in question. So yeah, as we're at on hold. So I didn't know if, um, I didn't know if there's an update now or if what that, if that was to come back today or at the next meeting in February. Chris remembers probably better than I do.
Well, unless there's a reason and somebody's got that looks like it would be negative for any reason, uh, I'd say let's get this going. Uh, it's just holding things up.
Well, essentially there was a task authorization that was presented, um, at the last meeting and, you know, that task authorization would need to be brought back before the board, whether that could be done now, um, or at the next meeting. But, you know, I agree, we're, we're essentially on hold until, until.
Does anybody have a reason why we're, we don't believe that this is gonna happen?
Now, the, I've, I talked to Rick at the beginning of this week and they were just having some title issues to clear up their survey, to do the exhibit and, you know, give it to Tony for his legal review to bless the easement document. The only other consideration is we plan to come back, at the first meeting in February with the DEP loan agreement. So your funding isn't in place yet, but.
Danny, to what extent, first meeting in February is what, third, fourth, something like that?
Fourth.
Fourth. Danny, is that gonna hurt for, uh, two weeks?
No, I mean, we've been in contact with, uh, you know, the county and the timing of theirs, but it is just impacting our timing on completing, um, the drawing set. So I don't know that two weeks, um, impacts us just, you know, just realize that's, you know, that's where we're at. But I think that's probably still the safest, um, route. I, I still, I, I think it's, it's probably a low risk. Um, if that was approved, uh, today, I just don't know the logistics of that can happen since it's not on the agenda. It would be an off the agenda item. So I, I'd say at this point, um, probably the conservative thing is, you know, let the two weeks go by. Um, that can be placed back on the agenda. Um, you know, hopefully we'll have more updated news from, uh, regarding the title work. And hopefully within that time, we'll actually have that and Tony could be reviewing it. Just, that's the only thing I want this board to realize is, you know, we're on hold. Um, until that, I, I think, you know, and we'll certainly ramp up to get that design completed ASAP. Um, but I don't think at this point it's going to, uh, be a, a huge impact.
What's the, what was the cost?
For the, the three projects that are listed in the facilities plan that we'll be discussing today at the rate case are 277,000. It's about 125,000. This is a separate. It's about a hundred and twenty five thousand. This is a separate project to to use that sixteen inch force main design. That was approved by the board already contingent on acceptance of the easement. And the reason we were doing that was, A, it's a more efficient route and it gets us out of the middle of the cul-de-sac with all our valves. Also, it makes construction a lot easier for turning things on and off. We actually save about thirty thousand dollars going to the north.
So at this point, what I'm hearing is that we just need to be able to make sure that it's on the agenda for that February fourth meeting to not kick the can down the road going at that point.
And Alice too, have we proved this?
Correct.
We approved the budget, but not the funding source, right? Is that accurate? So in my opinion.
Or the work.
What we have approved, the prioritization, we we've budgeted it, but we haven't specified the funding source. So I would be okay with approving to move forward with the funding source still being a TBD, in my opinion.
If 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 easement's good.
If the easement's good and there is a value of, you know, getting started today as opposed to pushing it two weeks. So us pushing it two weeks when we've already approved it, the likelihood of us not approving it or not having a funding source, I think is is a very low risk for me. So Danny, I would push that to you or Ed or anyone else on the board that would argue why we would need to wait for two weeks only to secure the funding source when we will secure the funding source at some point.
Well, I would certainly love for that to be approved today and it get us going. I mean, worst case, look at it this way, it's two weeks of engineering time if, for whatever reason, that didn't happen, which isn't going to be two weeks of, you know, somebody working forty hours a week on it. It's it's going to be whatever happens in that two weeks' time, just a CAD time and in in some engineering time. So you're not talking about an effort of twenty thousand dollars. You're talking about an effort in the, you know, probably three to four thousand dollars. So it's not a very big risk monetarily either.
I'd I'd agree with Doug totally. I'd make the motion to go in ahead and authorize the design work on the sixteen inch relocation.
We have a motion. Have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Chris, if you'll call a vote, please.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. Gepper.
Yes.
Mr. Guy.
Yes.
Mr. Tinkle.
Yes.
Mrs. Walsh.
Yeah.
And the funding, I was a little confused because we went from the facilities plan and the three force main and jumped to that. The funding will be coming like the other roundabout from the utility reserve account.
When you said that, I was wondering what we were. I thought maybe we did a one eighty.
We're we're just waiting for that agreement for the design and permitting for the other three projects. But this one, and we're estimating about one point two million dollars for construction and design for Griffin Road. And we'll probably be close to nine hundred thousand for Commerce Lakes. But we have of a over four million dollars sitting in that reserve account and we are planning to pull that out because it's a good fiscal idea to use those funds and not impact the ratepayers.
Short term.
Okay.
Come back and bite us later, but.
All right. Okay, so that's good. We, Tony, you good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So moving on, we will start with staff reports. And I think Laura, you were up first.
I was standing here waiting. Laura Leroy, Business Manager. I don't need any action from you on this one. It was just more of an FYI to let you know. This is one of the things that I had that I wanted to accomplish this year was to get some of this HR stuff done. And we had an opportunity to outsource these things to Paychex and it'll be like three hundred and twenty dollars a month. It's a month to month contract. And I'm guessing it'll probably take us about the five months that they're spreading the setup fee, the five hundred dollar setup fee. We'll look at it at the end of that and see if we still need them or not. They're going to do the handbook. They're going to go through and help me with job descriptions. They're going to do all of that stuff for us. So that gets that off my plate. Let them do the work and I can just look at it. So I don't, again, I don't need anything from you guys and I just want to let you know that I did this. I have a meeting with her tomorrow, with our rep tomorrow. We'll have a dedicated HR person. So anytime anybody calls, we have the same person every time we call in. So it's not like.
Through paycheck.
Through paychecks. Yep. So it's not like you have a team of people where you get a random person every time you call in. It'll always be the same person you talk to. So they'll learn the business.
That's right.
So you can just skip all those next pages and that's all I had for an update.
So I'm going to put you on the spot just really quick. Any questions on the paycheck? It seems pretty straightforward. So you're hitting your eight month.
Almost, yeah.
Almost eight month anniversary. Okay. And so having this this role, we've kind of augmented a little bit. Can you just talk to us just really quickly with some of the things like, you know, just in the in the last few months, the things that you've been able to accomplish? And and what's the next big hurdles for you? I know that you've focused a lot on some of this HR stuff.
Yeah, it was the biggest opportunity I saw when I got here. That would be the least amount of cost and that that was where I saw between that and the purchasing system, which we already have in place, that was a big thing. This is just, there's a lot of exposure or potential exposure. If you don't do things correctly here, then the HR stuff, and I wanted to make sure we were covered. But I've been working a lot with with Infomark. They've been good until we could get our procure by in place. I've got us a new security vendor. We're doing a lot of things different, cutting costs with, I've been working with GenOP to get rid of some of our phone lines and take advantage of the voice, the VoIP.
So you're taking over some of the IT responsibilities, some of that.
They're they're doing the IT part of it. I've just been working with them.
You're kind of PMing some of the coordinators.
Use my, I have a degree in computers too, so I use that experience. But I've been working with them to kind of mainstream some things and cut some costs there. So I've been able to trim some money there. I don't know. I've been doing a lot of things lately. I can't.
Just procedures and policies, I think.
It's been a lot of procedures, policies, looking at ways to do things more efficiently. The next big hurdle really is just getting these job descriptions down and making sure that everybody's job description reflects what they're doing and then looking for opportunities if we have overlap or if we have areas where we don't have people doing things that we fill those gaps.
Yes, okay.
So.
Right. No.
I just want to make.
I wanted you to have an opportunity just to kind of talk about.
Yeah.
Your, I know you've been working diligently and there's a lot of things that you've done. It doesn't always make it to to the board. So just want to give you a few minutes, so.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
I think I'm next to I have the next thing on there. The agenda item is me.
She doing the next one?
You doing the next one too?
Yep.
Okay.
Actually, Tony and I are kind of together on this one.
Oh, she's doing it.
I can't believe this.
So I I I came in after this all happens was this discovery.
Is that a disclaimer?
That's a disclaimer. This happened in May. I started in June.
I think that's her Oscar speech, right there.
I think the Academy.
She's been there long enough to learn that right.
I started in June. This happened in May. So, no, but anyway, Tony and I have been working together. I I did put a spreadsheet together and sent that to him and his team showing the hundred and fifty fifty, a hundred and fifty five dollars a month that we were being invoiced. I have copies of all of the invoices where I actually pulled it from to make sure that I could prove that, yes, we did pay this. It's for Stony Brook at their gatehouse. They questioned it and ADT actually sent an employee out there last May. And the employee from ADT verified that we indeed did not, nor did we ever have equipment there. So they couldn't justify why they were charging us for this service. I pulled all of the paperwork that they had on their site and I searched our contract information as well. And I am unable to find anything between us and ADT or us and DevCon that shows that we are should be paying for service there. So I had requested several times to get a refund from them. It's been a struggle since May to get them to not bill us. I think I finally got that straightened out. So we did get us like a nine hundred dollar credit for some stuff that they had charged us for since May. That part got taken care of. So anything from May and priorers where Tony and I worked together to to get those funds. So it came up to a total of seven thousand two hundred and eighty five dollars for that timeframe, that three year timeframe. And we did mail the letter out. Tony's office did mail the letter out. That's attached on the next page there. It just shows. And Tony, you got a fax back from them.
Yeah, and and real quick, the reason why, first of all, there are, there is a type one letter and the timeframe is, it's okay for the letter. But the reason why we only went back to two thousand seventeen, it's none, we have no evidence of written agreement and it's a four year statute limitations on on money.
That's why you went for. That's what I was wondering.
Trust me, Laura wanted to go back for what it's for. And the beauty of a small claims action, oh, we'll get to that in a second. I got a fax back that was basically, first of all, fax, not an email. That's all was interesting. And it just said, we received your demand. I've been signed the research, resolved it, want to reach out and introduce myself. We're going to be reviewing it and it's going to take more than a few days. So Laura and I are still the opinion, we still recommend authorizing the small claims action. It's going to cost less than the four fifty to prepare it. And then the beauty of small claims action, Laura can go in and do it. And we don't have to be there, whether, you know, Laura or Chris can go there. And so it saves a lot of cost, but we talk ahead of time. And you saw the basis for our position under Florida law. There's not a written agreement. We don't have the obligation to pay you. So pay us back.
Ed has a question.
This 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 reminds me, this is bad vibes from years ago where we had a lake maintenance company that was. Does this? Does this sound familiar?
Is that Stewart, I think? Yeah.
I don't remember if that's the name, but.
Double bill?
Double bill. You remember it well. Yes. What I don't understand is in in your letter, Tony, the district has erroneously been remitting payments. At that time, my argument was the person, and it wasn't anybody here, one staff, we were subbing that and we still may be. That's what I want to try to find out. But we were paying invoices. I don't know if you remember it. We were paying the same bill twice. And the firm that we were hiring to pay our bills wasn't verifying that we didn't even have a contract with these, that these were a sub. And we'll go into all that detail because it was bad, bad memories. This almost looks like a repeat.
Oh, no, that was more entertaining.
It was. I would I would argue with that. That was more entertaining.
And bigger dollars.
Bigger dollars, hundred thousand instead of seven.
I think our approach has been caught. It's been recognized and realized.
We gave them fourteen days. They didn't send us the money. So we were just asking for your permission to move forward.
So they're just billing us and we were paying them for work that wasn't even.
Part of the complication is, and this is one thing that I think we just need to be be aware of, when we have situations like with Stony Brook, we have pass through. In all intents and purposes, a lot of times once, you know, those bills, if we're, if if we're paying them on behalf of Stony Brook or even Pelican, a lot of times those gets passed through. And I don't think we've had maybe the some of the due diligence. Now, I will say that if you think about where we've been in the last three or four years, April started when she came in. She, a lot of due diligence, looking at the accounting and finance and what we're paying. And then Mike came in and added another layer. Now we've got Laura in. So I think we've gotten better. This is something that comes through and this is a pass through. I give a little bit of forgiveness here, but this is an area that we have to continue to improve on. And we've only had one of these. We had one now and then we had one years ago. So it's not a, it's not a burning platform in my opinion, but it is something that we have not historically done a very good job, especially when we had the management company involved and and other things. But we have to make sure that we are validating all of our contracts, what we're paying and all those things. That's part of kind of your responsibility, you know, moving forward. So.
Well, neither of them had a lot of basis on which to do what they did. It was, it was.
Well, this was, this one was camouflaged through, I think.
I think this one got complicated because my understanding anyway is that it was being paid by Stony Brook and then we took over whatever we did.
And then it was a pass through.
Started coming to us.
So we had, we had no visibility into whether we we had knowledge of equipment or not.
Yeah, we, they were approving it, so we just kept paying it.
So did you have a discussion with them? Is that, I guess I'm looking at this as like, okay, what part, what part of guilty do you not understand?
Well, they just probably assumed that there was equipment there and then it was kept getting billed and billed and billed.
I have not had any communications with them, Laura.
I have, I've had several communications with them regarding this, especially trying to get the credits that I was able to get from after we made the cancellation. And I have a confirmation of the cancellation. But like for here, I canceled their services and the guy from ADT actually laughed at me when I asked him for the confirmation number. For the cancel, I'm like, I want a confirmation number for the cancellation and he laughed. And I'm like, no, I want the number.
And you're saying that we have a four year statute of limitations on us?
Yeah.
All right, so.
What we're asking is authorization to file a small claims action.
Yep.
And we can file it within a week or two to make sure we capture.
Tony and I will work together and make sure.
So do you have, I do want to be sensitive to to the timing of the workshop and we do have a couple of other things. Anything else from you?
No, I only had those two things.
Any other staff? Are you doing any other staff reports?
We need a motion, I think.
Yes, please. A motion on filing and pursue the small claims action.
I'm going to make a unique motion that requires a Chicago strong armed man, but I'll make the motion.
Guido's not available this week.
Guido's not here? Okay.
I am trained in martial arts.
You can see three Guidos in the audience.
Listen to Pelican collective.
I'll make the motion to go on ahead and try to pursue this.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Chris, if you'll call the vote.
Certainly. Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. Gepper.
Yes.
Mr. Guy.
Yes.
Mr. Tinkle.
With Guido.
Mrs. Walsh.
Yes.
Motion passes five to oh.
Great. Thank you very much, Laura. Brian, are you good? Do you have me? Okay, perfect.
We're typically trying to keep our our sergeant staff reports for the first meeting of the month.
No, no, that's perfectly understood. So we have two action items. We have one walk on. So so we already did the ADT one. And we did the walk on already. So now, anything to pull for the consent agendas?
Well, before we leave staff items, I have one, one question. The last meeting, I think it was a gentleman from Hampton Park came to us saying they were trying to get the torals removed from behind eleven homes. So we're late. Okay, excuse me. Has that been done yet? Have we started doing it?
Yes, we sprayed it the first time last week and he was hitting the second go around Thursday or Friday. I advise Chris, do the fact that we did by spraying, it's three to four months process.
Yes. But it was free, right?
Yes.
Break up.
We're going to, we're going to pause, go into the workshop, then come back for, because I've got several items that are issues on the supervisor comments that require some discussion.
Okay.
Just wanted to.
Let's let's see if we can get through the consent agenda and then I will pause the regular meeting. Tony?
It's fine.
Acceptable. Okay. Do, so no, no items need to be pulled from consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda items A through E?
I approve, I make that motion.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion a second. Chris, please call.
Now, this is, are the the book that we have inclusive of the ones that were revised, the edits?
You're talking about the the committee.
There were two committee edits.
There were two, yeah, two.
As long as it includes the committee.
It includes the those edits, yes.
I second.
Call the vote. Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. Gepper.
Yes.
Mr. Guy.
Yes.
Mr. Tinkle.
Yes.
Mrs. Walsh.
Yes.
Motion passes five to approve consent agenda.
And do I have a motion to pause our regular meeting to to open the workshop?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Chris, if you would, call the, call the vote, please.
Sure. Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. Gepper.
Yes.
Mr. Guy.
Yes.
Tinkle.
Yes.
Mrs. Walsh.
Yes.
And I will go get our presenters.
So we are at four oh five, breaking into the board workshop.
Okay, while we're paused, I noticed on my Visa statement and went back for months and months and months, but I was paying two Visa bills for the same thing. So I called him. It was a Hewlett Packard printer. This is back to the issue we just talked about. I was paying for some guy in Michigan. They were billing me for months and months. It's only five bucks, but.
Yeah, he's your brother.
You got him. Yeah, he's my brother. My brother, but my utter mutter. Yeah, if you didn't have it, I thought backpack would.
Are these guys going to be?
Marshall?
No.
They're actually here today.
I will do an introduction.
Is that introductory music?
And I'll make the introduction. Then I'll have the gentleman get up. You know, we had started working on a rate case last year and the representatives from Raftellus are here. Quick introduction. Their firm is the largest public utility financial and management consulting practice in the nation. Hundred and twenty consultants and eighteen offices around the country. Florida office is in Maitland and they also registered as a municipal advisor with the U.S. Securities and Exchange Commission. And in twenty nineteen, Raftellus acquired PRMG, the Public Resources Management Group, which you may be familiar with because they did great work for Gateway and also for Lee County. So the principals in that firm now work for Raftellus. Today, we have Tony Harrison. He's the back vice president and also manages the central Florida office for Raftellus. And with him is Jeff Wilson. Jeff has twenty seven years of financial and rate making experience. And are, they are going to present the preliminary rate case, a draft today. We'll get the board comments. Our intent moving forward is to have this parallel, the budget process. Public hearing in May and approval in June, whichever direction we go with this in the final. And that way, because you do have impacts to customers and the HOAs with the master meters on irrigation, it gives them plenty of time to look at any potential rate impacts to their budgets.
For next year.
Yes, sir. And what we would look at is in. Yes, sir, and what we would look at is an October one implementation. And in the, in the decision-making, you look at, there's things we need to do to keep the utility self-sufficient. There's also three capital projects in there that have an impact to the rates. We also looked at some revenue recapture, which is basically moving funds to the enterprise fund, and we're also looking at the preliminary groundwork to enact a stormwater utility.
And so, and I think it's important, as we're going through the presentation, that we do really focus on the, the value that this is adding to the district and the impact that it has on the residents. So, Chris, I think you, you were kind of hitting on some of those items, but as you go through, if it's, if it's an opportunity, because you're speaking to not only the board, but also to our residents that may not be that familiar with, with what we're trying to do here. So any, any areas where you can bring it down to a, to a layman's terms, which may not, may, may not be easy in all areas, but just keep that in mind as you're going through.
Oh, excuse me.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're running the.
Let me bring this up here, I'm trying to see where they.
Where's our board meeting technical support representative?
That's why I said to my iPad.
Yeah, exactly. If it comes to show, I'll just walk around with these.
You're, you're just following through the slideshow on the, we've got on the, on the handout.
Correct, yeah.
We can follow on this and then catch up with. We've all got hard copyrights.
Okay. Hold my questions later.
These are the introductions.
Yeah, we didn't have any of that in ours.
Didn't see this?
No, yeah.
Oh, here. Okay. Oh, as opposed to iPads, because iPad, you can tell you there's angles there, right?
That's it, click right away.
Maybe in there.
Should be able to point. Either way, you're right up there.
Oh, yeah. There it is. I'm a bit doghouse.
There you go.
Just blew it.
Thank you. Good to go. Got it. At least we got slide two, so if not, we're just, we're good in there. Okay, well, thank you for the opportunity to, to talk with you today on this workshop. Again, my name's Tony Harrison, and I'm going to start things off. We, we have a, some detail to go through with you, and certainly we want to translate that. So for, you know, for your ratepayers and for the benefit of the audience. Jeff is, Jeff Wilson, who managed the study, is going to go through some of that detail. I'm just going to provide you a purpose and overview to set the table on our discussions. First of all, the objectives of the study is sustainable rate and financial plan that we just don't want to look for next fiscal year, even though we have rate recommendations for next year, next several years. We want to look at the next several years to get your capital funded and have you at a sustainable level. To, you had a rate study, and a couple of years ago, there's some new developments, especially on the capital side, and some on the operating side that are higher than what you had before. So it's building upon that, but we want to put you in a sustainable level. And built a financial model to incorporate all those elements. So the second bullet point is built on a five-year financial forecast, so we're going out five years. And the heart of that is developing a capital plan, so we looked at the capital funding. And the mix of capital funding is rate revenue, so you collect monthly rates from your ratepayers, water, wastewater, irrigation. And that goes to fund operating expenses primarily, and the debt that you already have incurred. But it also needs to go back into the system to reinvest in the system for a new replacement. So that's a very important element of sustainability. And there are also, we'll talk about the additional capital expenditures that, really, because they're long-lived, and if you tried to pay as you go, you would really have short-term severe rate increases for a short period of time that then would turn back down. Borrowing is the right thing. The question is how long to do, and Jeff's going to talk about that, twenty-year versus fifteen-year on the capital plan. The model tracks cash and, and reserves as well to maintain a minimum level. And then finally, at the end, Jeff's going to present the monthly rates that are going to be sustainable for water, wastewater, and irrigation. We compare that rates with others nearby. There, you know, it's a series of five-year increases, and you're lower than many utilities currently. Where that phasing takes you is closer to many of the other utilities in five years where they are today. Of course, we don't know where they're going to be in the future, but Jeff's got a chart that will spend some time to show where your rates are compared to others as well. And then just finishing off the purpose is, you know, one of the areas of focus is not just the water and wastewater, but the outdoor irrigation usage as well, which is one of the focus areas of the capital improvement. So, you know, the, the capital improvements are very focused on, not exclusively, but very focused on irrigation. So there's a focus on what those irrigation rates ought to be, and those that use the service are paying for it. There's a couple of other things outside of the monthly rates. The Gateway CDD purchases treatment services from Lee County, and there's a formula. What we haven't done is said, well, this is what the formula should be. That formula is already set forth in a, in a local agreement. So we just calculated, does that follow the interlocal agreement? And short answer is it does, so that's one of the things we did to make sure that is done correctly. The two other items that we did is, one is look at a return on investment charge on, to the general fund. So we have some information of what others do there, so Jeff has a slide on that. And then, as Chris mentioned before, preliminarily, just look at developing a stormwater utility where, you know, currently it's on an annual assessment. And what if you put that on the water bill, which is bimonthly? What are some of the things to think about as you might look at doing that? So we have a slide on that at the end. So you can go through a lot of slides on the rates and the rate comparisons, the recommendations, and a couple of slides on the end with these last three items as well. So with that, I'll hand it over to Jeff to walk you through some of the details and assumptions that we had.
Tony, one quick question. Establishing stormwater utility, how, how normal is that? Is this common?
Extremely common in the state. They've been in, in the state since late eighties, early nineties. More in municipalities. I know one of the issues, the first item, that if you were to look to go forward is for a community development district. They are, they're, you know, to our, to our knowledge, there are stormwaters under CDD, but we're looking into the, what are the, we're not attorneys, okay? But there is a question of what are the legal constraints on a community development district?
In the past, we had this discussion that the statutory authority for stormwater utilities is available for counties and municipalities, not for CDDs. So that's the discussion, I think Tony mentioned, about assessments that can be billed bimonthly. And that's one way to fund the stormwater assessments, as opposed to having it separately appear on your assessment roll that's collected by the tax factor through the tax. Because we, we looked at that way back when, it first came up, I'm not aware of any CDs that ever per se stormwater utility. The villages put it on your utility bill, but it's an assessment, I believe.
Yeah. And that's a little bit of the subtlety is, like the villages is what I was thinking of, is it's showing their bill, but.
It's actually an assessment.
Right, so.
Are you saying that as of right now, we're still vetting that out, or we're?
No, my, my opinion is, and we've had this, I think, discussion before, is that the only way to utilize, to have the stormwater, it's a stormwater assessment fee, has to be a special assessment under one ninety and one seventy, but it can be billed, not just annually, but it can be split up and billed on the utility bill, but it'll be part of your assessment. Because we can collect assessments directly, or we can collect them on the roll. That's, you know, there's a direct billing assessment possibility, you know, if they don't pay your full close, or we can collect it on the utility bill, or we can put it on the tax bill. But we looked at that before, about two years ago, I think.
I just hadn't seen it before. I was going, you know, is this, are we pioneering something, or, and apparently it's not, may not be common, but it's not uncommon either.
It's, it may not be common in, in a CDD environment, but in, in county and other municipalities, it is. It would be common practice, you could say.
Absolutely. Collier County had a huge pitchfork and torches moment about a year and a half ago, and they tried to utilize that. I think Cape Coral has a stormwater utility, a lot, a lot of municipalities and counties do, that's correct.
Yeah, I've been doing it for thirty years.
Specific statutory authority.
And the last thing I'll say before handing it over to Jeff, unless there's other questions, is about, I would, I don't know the exact number, but probably half that have a utility put it on a, on a, the tax bill annually, and the other have it on a utility bill. It's, there's a really wide mix of how those that have it actually administer, and there's pros and cons to all of that. We'll touch on a little bit of that at the end of the presentation.
And, and you're familiar with some of our limitations relative to the five-year and beyond on the bonds?
Yes, Jeff, we'll talk about those, and, and we'll talk about how that impacts the, the rates. We're, what, the rates that we're bringing are based on the twenty-year, which we understand with the referendum and so forth, but.
Validation.
Validation, excuse me. Sorry, I misspoke, thank you. Validation. So we're recommending twenty because the assets are at least twenty years, and there's all sorts of reasons. But we do show you what the difference is doing five versus twenty.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, good afternoon. Thank you, Tony. Just start, how do I?
Should be able to just click it and it'll turn the page.
But start off, Tony kind of touched on some of this already, but what we do with our study, just a little educational, which we classify as revenue requirements, which are the costs that we look at for the water, wastewater, and irrigation system. We look at, add up all your operating expenses based on your budget, your debt service payments, amount you want of capital funded from operations, then deposits for working capital and debt compliance. Then we subtract out other miscellaneous revenues and income you might receive from the utility, and the use of working capital or fund balances to get a total net revenue requirements that we need to recover from monthly user rates. We do all this and want to maintain, as Tony said, a sustainable process, so we want to maintain operating fund balances and any debt service coverage requirements that you may have. Some of the major issues facing the utility, it's continued inflation on cost of operations. We're projecting cost to go up by about two point five percent per year, kind of based on the Congressional Budget Office's projections for the next five years. Increased labor, purchase power, chemicals, and your purchase water and wastewater costs from Lee County too. And increased cost of insurance, so the average cost for the utility that we have over the next five years are expected to go up about two point seven percent annually. So that, and the growth, the down below system growth is not expected to be as great as the cost increase for the utility. So that's kind of shrink share margins available to offset any kind of future rate increases.
And I would imagine this is also based on an environment that has been maintaining a consistent maintenance schedule for twenty years, which we have not, so keep that in mind as we're going through with some of the justification on why.
We'll be playing catch-up.
Why we're playing catch-up, and why our costs are probably a lot higher than other standard utilities that might be in place today.
And then the main driver for this case is capital-related. So it's a major issue facing all utilities across the country and Gateways, you know, different, it has a significant capital investment in its water and irrigation and wastewater assets that need to be maintained and provide reliable service to its customers. So it requires an annual levelized capital reinvestment plan. We're kind of recommending deposit ten percent of your revenues into an R and R fund to help maintain those assets. But that again is one of the reasons for the increases. But as you'll see in, on the next few slides, that even that ten percent won't be enough. You have some significant capital projects that are coming up, and that ten percent of pay-as-you-go or annual revenues won't be enough to offset the total need for the system. Overall, for the next five years, capital needs are projected to be thirteen point nine million dollars. And as showed down here, kind of the funding sources, rate revenues will cover some of that. Your existing cash balances will fund quite a large portion of that, about three point five million. So you're in good shape that you do have existing operating reserves on hand that can help cover some of those costs. And then the renewal and replacement fund that I just talked about can cover another two point four million.
And that's over how much time, what time?
Five-year period.
Five-year, five-year period, we're looking at R and R at two point four.
Oh, we're, yeah.
Over two four, okay.
And so the additional debt, the remainder of that, is seven point six million dollars over the five-year period. And we'll get into.
And the R and R fund is new, that's one of the things we're proposing.
You've had a R and R fund, but I think it's more projected at five percent in previous.
It's, it's higher, it's higher than that. I'll pull it from you, but I'll get you the number. Yeah, we did, we did that in the last rate case, which was a set aside so we could start building up some money for.
So we do have that place today, boss, but it's not.
So it's not totally, okay.
So, to continue on with the, with the debt, we've broken it out into two different issues. Four point two million is needed pretty quickly based on capital improvement projects. And again, as Tony said before, we're basing all this on a twenty-year financing and three percent interest rate. So the annual debt service for that first issue is approximately two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars a year. And the second one is soon to follow after that, in twenty twenty-two, three point seven million, same type of assumptions, two hundred and forty-eight thousand. So the total of that is over five hundred thousand dollars in annual debt service to the system. And these charts, on the next page, I won't spend a lot of time on it, but it just kind of summarizes that. You can see on the orange line kind of shows your revenues from existing rates for water, irrigation, and wastewater. And the dotted line shows the revenues under projected rates and the cost. So you can see, existing rate revenues aren't projected to meet the requirements of the system over the next five years. Based on that, and primarily they've increased in cost of operations and the significant capital improvement plan, these are projected annual rate adjustments for the system for the next five years. Water, we're projecting fifteen percent increase through twenty twenty-three, and then it drops down to inflationary cost increases, like a CPI index increase for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. The irrigation system, ten percent increases for the next three years for that system. Then it drops down to inflationary for the remainder of the forecast.
Question?
Yes.
The, the water is seeing a substantial increase. However, when we look at page twelve with the capital improvements, essentially none of them are water. They're all either reuse or sanitary wastewater. Is the water operating driven?
Yes, and it, when we prepared the study, there's a water was significantly underperforming currently compared to what the wastewater is. So even though wastewater rate increases are more modest, it's kind of helping support the water system till it can.
So we're using water, we're using. So we're using water, we're using water increase revenue to fund some of the other areas. Is that accurate?
No.
No.
We can't do that, right?
Yeah, I think what, what's, what it sounds like to me is our, 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 our cost of providing water, uh, is below what we need to be.
We're increasing to get to.
Yeah. Because it's not a capital. It's not a debt related deal. It's, it's op, it's got to be operating.
No, it's a, yeah, underperformance compared to the.
Even though we don't need it and it's an opportunity to get us to what would be.
Breaking market right now. Uh, okay.
If I may comment on that last rate case, what we did in that significant increase in the irrigation rate because water and wastewater were subsidizing and we weren't, we were not even breaking even. We were losing money on the irrigation rate. So we're underperforming. Yeah.
Thank you.
And we look into uh, with, with this, are we looking to offset our, that five hundred, five hundred thousand projected S R F uh, monthly costs that was ever trying to offset with this?
With the rate increases?
Yeah, as opposed to total, I mean.
Also the new debt assumption.
Yeah.
Well, for the, for the, for the water, we're offsetting the operating failures and on the other two, we're offsetting the debt failures.
Right, right, okay.
That's correct. And again, all this assumes, um, twenty year financing and we'll get into the difference here. In this couple of slides, but the typical monthly bill impact here shown for the water customer, wastewater customer and irrigation customer. So you can see for next year, it's a typical bill of seven thousand gallons per month. It's a five dollar and seventy eight cent increase per month. On the wastewater, it's two dollars and twenty one cents per month. And on the irrigation system, it's a dollar seventy three.
And, and this is per month. So when we bill it bi-monthly, then it's.
Double that.
Yeah.
Which doesn't seem that substantial. This.
Twenty dollars.
Yeah.
Give you an order of magnitude on and mention some of the projects that, um, are in that thirteen point nine million dollar C I P and we kind of wanted to give you how much of a rate driver that is with the increases and then also show you the impact if we wanted to switch to five year financing versus twenty year financing. So you can see Hawthorne Wells here, a million dollar, it's a million dollar capital project. Monthly increases a dollar fifteen per month or six point six four percent increase. Um, then if you take that for a five year financing, it jumps up to three dollars and seventy three cents per month impact for that project or twenty one. So, um, about triple, a little bit over triple the impact if you go to five year financing. Yes, you would pay it off in five years, but the impact is significant to the customers to go from twenty year to five year financing.
What's, what's our cost or do we have any costs, Tony, for any additional bond validation? Or are we done with that? Or do we have to do it again?
Have to be a brand new bond validation.
So dollar value out of his seven point six million here projected, what's, what's the bond validation cost on that?
I'm not sure. First of all, how much you want to validate for the borrowing.
I'm just gonna say it all.
Probably, I'm talking attorney fees, expert fees, in case it's necessary, it could be fifteen, twenty thousand dollars probably.
So it's not.
I'm just guessing. I mean.
It's not a big deal.
And I think one point of consideration here when we look at this is.
Engineer's report, you have report cover for Dallas experts, and then we just do the, uh.
I mean, if I, if I'm sitting here looking every one of these.
The utility customers, you know.
If I'm looking at every one of these things with a minimum twenty, thirty year service life, probably more like fifty year service life. Why am I talking about five years? What part of stupid is that?
Here's the reason why.
I mean, what part of stupid is that?
Well, but here's, here's part of the, part of consideration. So the capital, uh, let's just look at cap, capital and maintenance. What the plan that we have together with these items, this is, let's say arguably a two to five year plan. Would you, would you agree as far as items that we have on our roadmap of critical?
Without the unknowns.
Without the unknowns. Right. So if we're operating on the assumption that we're going to get the majority of the things that we, we have purview to, um, done in the next two to five years, and we're going to finance them over twenty. That puts us in a favorable position in year six or seven. If we have huge, you know, some, some big things that come up that, you know, could potentially double this, that's another, another financing for twenty. So the, the, the cost and impact is compacted if we aren't forecasting appropriately, and if we haven't done our due diligence and, and what we think capital and maintenance items may be. I think we're in, I think we've just about uncovered a lot of the rocks. So there's not going to be a whole lot of big, big surprise out there unless something, we have critical failure somewhere that's unknown. But to me, that's the only reason why you would even think about a five year versus a twenty, which I'm in favor of a twenty year. Cause I think, I don't, I don't perceive any, anything that's going to be substantial. We're talking millions of dollars that would hit the district that we would have to do regardless.
And the, the, the three projects.
Something catastrophic is going to happen to your base, gonna have to happen to your base rate to even consider this as an issue. I mean, it's just, it's, it's crazy. If you have status quo on the growth, you're still ahead. Cause the guy that's sitting here is going to live for five years. He's saying, I'd much rather pass on that cost for another fifteen years to somebody else than to come out of my bill.
So my point is that, my point is.
What am I, what am I doing?
So important that we have confidence in this plan that we have identified all the big rocks that we're going to, that we're going to do over the next two to five years and that there's not, you know, some other critical failure out there that could double this.
That's why I was bringing up earlier and what kind of surprised me. I wanted to make sure because I was not aware that we had any exposure on the water, the potable side. And that's why I was asking that question. It is a operating side, not a potable side. So we don't have a debt and everything I have seen out there, I don't see anything that forecasts us to have a huge capital expense. On our, on our water side. Well, it is just that we may have some things to do like valve replacement.
Yeah.
Uh, some big ticket items there. But our major components of our, uh, potable water system are in pretty good shape. Our sewer and our irrigation, they've got some, that's this deal here. So it, it looks like we're in pretty good shape on that then.
And Tony, you had a.
I was trying to clarify the cost and fees. The validation is with twenty thousand, but then you have the cost of issuance for the borrowing. And that's another whole number.
I, I just wanted to bring attention to the, the only reason why I would even look at maybe a five year, if there was unknowns and those unknowns posed a risk, but I think, I think staff has done a pretty good job. So I don't see any reason why anything other than twenty years would, would even be up for conversation.
Mr. Chair. Unless you could figure out a way to go to thirty.
Wow.
I mean, I'm, I'm telling you, you are not going to go out here with these water lines and sewer lines, dig them up, tear them up and put in brand new ones. You get cities in this country, it's got a hundred and fifty, two hundred year old pipe. They didn't go out and tear it up. Neither are we. So sitting here talking about debt financing this stuff on a short term, when it has a life that is ridiculous is just, makes no sense.
Yeah, that's, yes.
And then, and then throw in the fact that the interest rates are nothing. Well, I mean, this is a no brainer.
Okay, hold on.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That's right. I just wanted to.
You tried to say the next four years, something might change.
Hold on guys.
No, I just wanted to mention that three of those projects that you see up there, the Hawthorne well, they bypass force main and the twelve inch irrigation main are the projects and all of these are in the facilities plan. And three of those projects are the ones we'll bring back next month for the design and permitting over the next year at that two hundred and seventy seven thousand dollar cost. So they've all been vetted through the facilities plan, the design and permitting and over the next year, while they're doing that is when we would do the bond validation, the rate increase and start working toward it. But, uh, these, these projects have all been in the works for about two years.
Yeah, right. Several years. Okay, let's keep it.
Then the slide that most people care the most about, but really is independent, each utility has different reasons for their level of rates. But we like to show this your water and sewer, um, monthly bill compared to other neighboring communities. And this does show that, um, currently at ninety three dollars and seventy five cents per month, you're currently at the lower end. And even with next year's rate adjustment, you'll still be below to the midpoint. And as Tony said earlier, we haven't put in the rate increases that these other utilities will be doing for next year. And that's why we don't really carry it out five years either, because we won't know what their rate adjustments are going to be over that period of time.
Any reason you omitted reuse?
Um, we have it coming up here and.
Oh, okay.
In the next.
Omitted what?
Reuse.
Oh.
So.
And that's, that's pretty remarkable when you consider this and you look at the E R U's that we have, which here with our side, what seven, eight thousand E R U's, some of these are humongous compared to us.
And the reason why we put reuse on a separate slide is that these other utilities too might have, um, and I know likely high acres. You'd get a separate irrigation meter, but they would charge you the same, uh, potable water rates. You just save on the sewer charges. So we didn't want to include that if we don't know what the other, um, rates are for the other utility systems.
Now, this, this chart on fifteen. Okay, so that twenty thirty is present and the thirty four seventy eight is with the debt components of capital improvements we've got projected.
On slide fifteen?
Fifteen.
Why did we get there?
I'm just trying to compare all these. So when someone, that, all, all the money comes out of my billfold, whether it is some page twelve or page fifteen. The, the thing I'm trying to say is that.
Yeah, the twenty thirty is the current rate and the thirty four seventy eight is the.
So, so with these debt improvement related, uh, things that we're talking about doing capital improvements, that's all the impact.
Um, no, that's the first year, first year. We don't show the multiple. So then you'd have a ten percent increase.
Okay.
We're kind of doing a rate design, structure change for irrigation, which I'll get into in a minute, which has, have an impact there. So speaking of the irrigation rate, we kind of are changing, proposing to change the rate structure currently. Your tier structure is zero to twenty five thousand gallons per month. You charge fifty cents for twenty five thousand to fifty thousand gallons per month. You charge two dollars and then above fifty thousand gallons per month. You charge four dollars. Uh, we're proposing to collapse those tiers somewhat because the allowance is rather large, zero to twenty five thousand. So we're proposing to collapse that down to zero to fifteen thousand per month for the first block. And our basis for that is, um, F T P guidelines for watering two times a week and comes out to be about thirteen to fourteen thousand gallons per month for a typical lot that you should be watering if you have your irrigation system set.
Okay.
For two times a week.
I haven't looked at this that close, but I've got some issues with that from prior life. Master meters. Are we giving people with a master metered irrigation system an advantage or a disadvantage with consumption usage?
It's.
Per you, per unit. So if you have somebody that has a, let's say a hundred homes, all on a master meter with a three inch, those same hundred homes that pay individually, how do those stack up for the same increasing amount of water?
It's the same, um, block structure for both for per master meter, we call a equivalent residential unit, which is the same as a single family equivalent residential unit. So everybody based on.
So everybody's level.
Right.
Okay, I buy that then.
So that is a, that's one of the reasons for the jump up in the chart that we looked at previously is we are proposing to collapse those blocks down. And so it does have an impact on the higher irrigation users more than somebody that would use under that amount. I can kind of go to that. I think we have a yeah, here's on slide seventeen. Can see that, uh, lower users irrigation.
Yeah.
Their bill goes up anywhere from thirty eight cents to begin with, that zero usage all the way up to fifteen thousand gallons. It's, that's a modest increase of a dollar eighty eight, but then over fifteen thousand gallons per month. That's when an increase starts to pick up.
So what you're saying is if you want green, green grass, you're going to pay for it with green, green dollars.
Right. And even, even that, it shows that, um, you're very competitive. On slide fifteen. Compared to, these are other utilities that provide similar product, which is raw water irrigation system. It, you can see that you're, even with the increase or proposed rate design, it's, um, at twenty, and this is at twenty seven thousand gallons per month, which is.
We're on the bi-monthly at fifty right now for the, uh, five eighth by three quarter inch, uh, low, low, uh, usage. What was the justification? Cause people ask, you reduce that down to thirty thousand instead of fifty thousand. What, what's the justification?
Just because you're, um, F T E, um, F T P watering requirements and guidelines. Water your, uh, grass two times per week for a typical.
So you were taking an average acreage per lot?
Right.
And multiplying it times or?
Typical standard, um, I think it was seventy five by one hundred lot and it less the size of the homes. You come up with like five thousand square foot of irrigation space times, I believe it's a half an inch of water per watering cycle. Comes out to be about, um, fourteen thousand gallons per month is if you set your sprinkler system correctly.
We, remember we had this discussion years ago and I, I thought somebody then convinced me of the twenty five. Now, you, you just calculated the deal that would suggest the fifteen. Something, something is in there that's.
And that assumes every month, so during the rainy months, theoretically you would not have to water.
So you're averaging out on, uh, three hundred and sixty days instead of a.
No, I'm, I'm, we're giving everybody allowances if they water two times per week every month of the year, which really isn't probably required during the rains.
Yeah, because you, most of these people, they turn it off going into wet season.
Well, do they? I, I don't know. Is that?
A lot of people do.
You think that's, okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not making assumptions that we're actually looking at that that is what happens.
Wait, you'd be crazy if you're not, but the.
Well, I know.
The issue is, is that this going to see, this is going to, this is going to impact a lot of people because a lot of people that are in that first two brackets. Okay.
And it just shows multifamily unit, um, consumption is less. So that just shows the typical monthly bill. Again, same type of results significantly below what other communities charge for a similar product or service.
I just want to, we have about fifteen minutes.
And we kind of went at this, the larger users will see a, um, increase greater than the lower users. And as part of the, um, study too, that staff asked us to review the annual maintenance true up cost charged by Lee County. So we looked at that for the last couple of years and it calculations are, are follow the terms of the existing agreement. Just the main reason for the increased costs this year were the, um, increased costs of operations for the county or from the county. So, but everything they haven't made any mistakes. They still follow the term of the agreement.
And, and that was, I'm not worried so much about wastewater, that, that's true for the water side. So then that huge increase that we're seeing on the water side, is it cost per thousand of the water that they're charging that we're not assessing? Or is it internal, uh, repair and replacement costs or other operating costs that we got that we aren't covering?
It's the operation maintenance of the.
Of the system.
Plant, right.
You recall Mr. Tinkle that, uh, true up costs this past year went from fifty thousand to eighty thousand dollars.
I, I hate that word with those people. I trust them as far as I can throw them.
We wanted, we wanted to review that because I didn't want to come to you and say, yeah, we'll pay it without some examples and justification.
I'm glad somebody looked at because if you don't look at them, they, they've taken us to the cleaner since two thousand and three.
Another item we were asked to look at is a, um, our study currently assumes a, uh, return on investment or transfer to the general fund of two point five percent of annual gross revenues, which equates to about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually per year. So that does have an impact on the rate increases. It would be a one, a one time, it's kind of a one to one relationship. If you're taking two point five percent of gross revenues, then it results in a rate increase of two point five percent. That's built into the rate increases that you see here currently, but that would begin to allow for overall water, wastewater and irrigation transfer to the general fund of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. And we did some comparisons on the next slide of what other utilities. And we did some comparisons on the next slide of what other utilities charge for a return on investment charge or general fund transfer. You can see two point five percent is-
Still very low.
Very low compared to what other utilities charge. We have ranging from the average around five to seven percent, some up to ten, fourteen percent there you see for-
And, and if somebody asks why, other than because you can, what's the answer?
Just services I assume provided by the general fund.
And we also look at it as using the district's right of way and properties for our lines and infrastructure.
This had been talked about earlier, but also we're asked to kind of bring up the topic and for discussion of a drainage stormwater utility. And so the issue is legality, which sounds like made a head start. I'm looking into that and on an assessment basis. The timing of the new revenue collection, when would you want to implement this? Or will it commence November twenty first? And what kind of cost do you want to recover? Is it for physically your twenty one costs or twenty twenty two costs? All these are kind of checklist items for discussion on when you're establishing this. And then I think talks about the, does it come on a bi-monthly bill beginning again when October first?
You're, you're familiar with the, what generated this issue is we, when you're doing it the way we're doing it right now, it's an assumed equality across the board. And on stormwater runoff, that is not true at all. It's, it's a runoff ratio coefficient. And the stormwater runoff deal would allow us to take and address that head on with a rate structure that you discharge the water, you create the runoff, you pay for it. So, but this sounds like Tony, what you're saying is we've got to modify it because of creating a true deal in the, the books as you would with the city and the town. But, but basically we can create the same thing, only call it something else.
Well, it's an assessment and we have to have an engineer's report and we can use whatever appropriate formula. Like you mentioned, you can pick us for a footage. You, the Kyler County went through this whole process of using LiDAR data that they had and looking at every property and assigning a value each property for pavers, pools. It was, it was-
That, that's kind of overkill.
It was incredibly overkill.
Yeah.
But, but then you, basically it's, it's an assessment. So we have to follow that. Special benefit test for the assessment. We could do that for virtual, like you said, purpose for Zimper is the coefficient of runoff. But then I think the thought process that we had talked about was having it, having the assessment imposed by a typical resolution, adopting the budget and the assessment, going through that hearing process, but then billing it bi-monthly. That's the collection process only, throwing out utility bills saying, hey, you owe this, let's say fifteen hundred dollars here, let's pick a number, and we're going to spread it out over six payments. So it'll show up in utility bills, the center line item, pay it with utility bill.
Okay.
Tony, if y'all have thought about it that way at all or not, I don't know.
Is this envisioned to be a dollar for dollar trade off? In other words, a revenue neutral type of change in the way of billing?
It won't. It won't. It may be on-
We have a total budget.
On the total it may be, but for the, the various users, it's, it's going to change around because it's going to be based upon the actual, what you produce. So somebody's got, sitting out there with a huge runoff coefficient that's right now paying on equality by the way, way we're doing it, they're going to see a-
I'm, I'm okay with that. Like, like we did with the, with the assessment methodology.
Very similar.
The end product was, you know, revenue neutral, but there were some significant winners-
Yeah.
And some definitely could lose.
Yeah, but it's still fair and equitable.
It's still fair and equitable.
What I could do is get the Kyler County written reports and send that around to y'all. I think Cape Coral also has done this in the past, the Stormwater Utility, I think they have one. No, Fort Myers does. You recall a number of years ago, the city of Fort Myers wanted to impose a stormwater utility on the CGD. We're going, we operate the backflowing system. What are y'all doing? And we discharge into, we don't touch any city facilities and then the city backed off. They were going to charge public reserve properties for that. That was years ago. I don't know if I remember that.
I think it's needed, even if we can't do it the way because of the statute, still creating it, whether we get the money on, yeah, the billing process, who cares?
I, I was just wondering if, for my own edification, whether this was a new revenue stream or whether it's just the redistribution of the existing-
It's an alternative.
Taking it out of A and putting it in B.
Alternative method, alternative method of flexion, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's keep moving.
Yeah.
That I think is all we have, just conclusions, recommendations. The existing utility rates are not projected to meet the funding requirements of the system over the forecast over the next five years. The board should consider adopting the proposed rates recommended for the year two thousand twenty one through two thousand twenty five. And then Chris, you and staff would be working on a change management plan, communications, just like we did through the assessment, town halls. And, and I think we should use that as a, as a lesson learned or even, you know, let's after action, you know, what did we do well during that? And where, maybe we have had some shortfalls.
Well, we, we got out and we're going to beta test it Monday night with Daniel's Preserve because I'll be at their HOA meeting and roll out, get this discussion going on a couple of issues, including what Brian mentioned to them is what we've done recently in the stormwater inspection, costs of that. And we will have a public outreach program in place and touch each of the HOAs with that. Basically what Mr. Gepper was asking too, is we're just taking that chunk of the waterway management and we're moving it out of the general assessments at the end of the year. That assessment will go down correspondingly by the same amount of money.
And that's critical. And you're going to, you're going to, going to look like a good guy.
Well, and it's also transparent because the people know when they see that bill, where's it going? It's going to stormwater management.
Yes.
You know, there's, there's no ifs, ands and buts when it's collected like that.
What I would caution you is when you do rolls, this, I would say this is something that we are looking at-
Right.
As an option. So just be a little vague when it comes to whether, what our direct path is because it's still a little early, I think, you know, but yeah, kick guitars on that a little bit.
But one other question. On page twelve and page eight, can you identify that you get the four point two million SRF and the three point seven million, seven point nine million total? And this says seven point six, so I assume there's some add-on cost. But which one of those projects or which of these projects on page twelve, have you got that total of four point two? In other words, what's the phase one? What's the phase two? How did you, how did you come up with that four point two and the three point seven? I assume that you were going to do one or two or three of these projects in twenty one and the other two or three in twenty two.
That's correct.
Which, which ones which?
I, I can explain, Mr. Tinkles. I mentioned those are the ones in the facilities plan that you'll see the design and permitting. So it's the Hawthorne well, the twelve inch irrigation well and the bypass force mains. And so those three, those three projects are in the first phase.
That's three billion fifty thousand.
Hawthorne, twelve inch. Yeah.
First, second, and the next to last.
Yeah. The irrigation spray?
Yes, sir. Well, no, 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 the first two, the Hawthorne well, the twelve inch irrigation main, and then the very last one, the twelve inch force main. And those are the same projects that you'll see next month that have the two hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars approved for SRF for design and permitting. The other two, for the four million dollars comes from the irrigation system and the tank.
Those numbers don't add, right?
Yeah, the numbers don't, that, that can't be true because if the two million gallon irrigation storage tank and the FPL spray irrigation, which is four point six million, it's only showing three point seven on phase did twenty two. That's why I was having troubles with, I couldn't make the math add.
It's the-
See, what I thought it was, was the Hawthorne, the FPL spray and the twelve inch FPL were all phase one. And then the others were phase two.
That's fine.
It's the, because if you're going to, the, the, the whole idea of the two million gallon irrigation tank was to have the twelve inch irrigation main to feed it. So those two would, putting in the irrigation main might supplement on the pressure issue, but the, the whole idea was to average flow that and use the storage. But I just couldn't make the math of the numbers total.
Right. And it's, the way we have it funded is, yes, the Hawthorne wells is in the first loan.
Okay.
The irrigation, twelve inch irrigation main is in the first-
Okay.
Tranche of loan and FPL spray irrigation system is also in the-
Oh, now that makes sense then. So the FPL spray irrigation and the twelve inch FPL bypass force main, one, two, three, four. There you go. That makes sense. Okay, okay. And that makes more sense from an engineering point of view too. Okay, I like that.
Any additional questions?
Great job.
Nope.
We'll look, continue to move forward. We'll bring you as, as we fine tune this and roll out the public-
We were talking about, real quickly, if we don't get SRF, any comparison with somebody else doing the analysis of a public bond offering versus SRF?
We've assumed a three percent rate. Hopefully you can actually beat that with a SRF loan. But if you don't get a SRF loan, there's multiple other, commercial paper, bank loans.
Competitive.
Right. And you're talking about thirty year financing. That is a potential, even though this is, I hate to say, sounds small, but usually bond issues be slightly larger than this, but it is, there's potential for-
You've, you've had experience with banks that would go to thirty years?
Um, not banks so much. Banks would be more fifteen or twenty year period.
Yeah, fifteen, twenty.
Revenue bond wise, it's, there's potential for that, even though this is kind of a smaller-
Okay.
Issue.
And, and again, Mr. Tinkles, I mentioned earlier, they are a registered municipal financial advisor, their firm, so they can cover all bases.
Okay, no. Great.
Well, gentlemen, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Very good information.
Very good. Okay, can I have a motion to resume our regular?
I make a motion, we resume the regular meeting.
Tag it.
My motion is second. Chris, call the vote please.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. Gepper?
Yes.
Mr. Guy? Mr. Guy?
He's on.
He's, he's on mute.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Tinkle?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Okay. All right. So we did complete, we did complete consent agenda, correct?
Consent agenda is just supervisor comments.
And I will start down here with you, Bob.
I have no comments. Was very happy to hear, other than to say, I'm very happy to hear that, that whose pods were being sprayed at no cost.
Yeah, you know, and again, that's, it's just, that was just a good opportunity for us to have some open discussion.
Yep.
Pivot and get it done. Do you want to wait just a minute for Chris to come back in?
Yeah, I want Chris to come back in.
Okay.
While we're waiting, is there something that's going to be coming back to us in the way of a proposal on this proposed rate study? What's, what's the next step?
I don't know. That's a good question to ask Chris, because he's been involved with the consultants. Yeah, because depending upon-
This just doesn't happen overnight. We got to have advertising and all that stuff. And if we're trying to have this done by August.
It's a long haul.
So a lot of work to be done.
I agree. And the only, the only residents impacted are those residents that are getting the services of the water, the sewage and irrigation.
Correct. Correct.
And, and the question becomes on that too, whether or not there's sufficient time to implement the stormwater portion of it this year or not, because that's a more detailed engineer's report.
That's a little bit more complicated.
So Chris, while you're out, the question came up, what's, uh, what's the next step on utility?
Well, we get political comments from the board members and start reviewing this in a little more detail. We'll bring it back again in two months to try to fine tune it as we do the public outreach. And again, we're looking at a public hearing in May and an approval in June for October implementation.
A lot of stuff has got to be done on this. I just didn't want to drop the ball.
And in the stormwater utility, I, I agree, Tony, it may not be doable for this year, but we need to get the ball rolling and get it started. And I, and I think the assessment methodology really took care of that engineering because you have a new methodology to assess people for stormwater.
If we can pull that stormwater piece out.
Right.
As a standalone.
That has, that has to be a standalone because some of the Pelican people that are in our newer communities are already paying those fees without them being labeled as such.
That's what we need to, you know.
And yeah, so we got to sort through all that.
I think a good conversation topic would be for Chris and Russ, may reengage Russ again and Danny to talk about that approach as to this piece, this very unique piece that we want to fill on the utility bill. But if, if the, the primary focus is to get the rates.
Yeah, that might be a big bite.
Yeah, I have no problem separating the two and do the water.
Then if, if Talus can also assist on the financing end, and then we could do the borrowing validation. After that, get a scope of the project, which is the capital improvement program, get the engineer's report and let Talus to support a capital improvement project of X dollars plus whatever contingencies and everything else and validate borrowing for that amount. And that'll be paid back with the user rates, fees and charges. But so that would be after we adopt the rate. So that would, that validation would probably take, because COVID and everything Zoom hearings now, it may take about five to six months, a little bit longer than normal.
Okay. And we could look at, we could also look at borrowing the money, fund the stormwater utility for the first year and the second year assessments are paying it back and now you're on a path.
Again, it's comparable to what we did with the lake bank restoration. We had the interim, short-term borrowing of like three million eight, I think.
Correct.
And then we took that out with the SRF loan after we did the validation. But that's who you're thinking.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Mr. Guy, any supervisor comments, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I want to remind board members that our agreement with Lee County Utilities requires that we use or take, I think is the word, so many gallons of water every month. And when we are talking about increasing the rates of citizens who use a little more water to green their lawns than we think is appropriate, we need to keep in mind the contents of that agreement. Sounds to me like we're working against ourselves. Secondly, I'd like to ask the district manager if he has had any conversation with Lee County tax collector as to what our assessments for this year look like.
Sir, I, I have not, but I did ask Stephen Bloom today, I was chatting during the meeting, if he could bring a report on February fourth to the board. And I could probably get those numbers sooner.
Thank you. I think it's very important that we know where we're headed as far as the assessment take is concerned. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you. Bobby, anything? Supervisor comments?
Yes. Brian, are you picking on presenting this in the next meeting? Okay, so just maybe, um, Brian and I, just to recap, Brian and I actually met with Mark yesterday. So we had some discussion and after a meeting, I had actually asked Brian to walk me to the concession stand. And I will wait to make my full comments when he brings the report, but I would like to invite each of you, maybe definitely Bob and Adam, as you probably are familiar with, take, go in there with Brian or staff, take a look at it. I'm not so concerned about the storage of the concession stand. Yeah. We have, we have issues.
Okay.
Okay, and then I'll more in detail with what.
Brian, if you just shoot me an email, what's a good time for you next week, two or three days?
Sure.
I'll pick one and be there.
Yeah, and I would take them through all, like all the available, like just all the facilities over there. The concession stand and the, the, the back electrical, the, the building with the light electrical stuff in it. Just, yeah, just so they see all of it.
We're looking at it too.
I could see both sides when I saw the concession stand. You couldn't pay me to do that.
Okay.
I know. Well, and a lot, and some of that equipment doesn't even work. So we're just, it's sitting there or it doesn't function a hundred percent.
I mean, there is liability issues there for us.
Yeah.
I can, I can assure you that.
I mean, the good news is most of those lakes don't really service that much food out of there anymore. But yeah, I know, I know what you're saying. All right. And Ed, you had a couple of items, correct?
Yeah, I think the first one, Bill, I didn't understand exactly what you were talking about, but as a way I read that the rate consultant was proposing the irrigation side, they're lowering the value of the water, which is creating more of a conservation related issue than what we have right now. So I think if anything, we should be in better shape by reducing the impact of the reused water. So anyway, I thought that's what their study was trying to do is to create more conservation. I don't know if the rest of you being, are being contacted by, but, and I went over there and looked at it and we, we, we have an issue. There is no doubt we have an issue with the fun park. Because you sent an email to somebody and you said something, and I think probably it's, you didn't probably want to say it that way, but you said it and it's probably true. Because you sent an email to somebody and you said something, and I think probably it's, you didn't probably want to say it that way, but you said it and it's probably true. And that is this issue is that we're sitting over there with an asset and we no more can control it than the man in the moon. And the police are not going to do it. I mean, if you think Lee County Sheriff's going to do that, you're whistling Dixie. It isn't going to happen. My deal is, is that at this point in time, I am not interested because of the park study that we're doing. I'm not interested in spending a lot of money of putting a fence or perimeter fence around that fun park. But what I am willing to look at is going over and purchasing an acetylene torch and cutting down the two basketball goals immediately.
Well, sir, we, we have the.
This is ridiculous.
I made a comment.
Just, can you provide the board some background? Yeah.
The issue is we're having people coming over there and they're playing at night. There, we have a gate and the gate is a joke because you go around it. It's not stopping anybody. My deal is, is cut the damn basketball.
So the problem is that people are complaining that, that the, the facilities are being used outside of normal operating.
Normal operating. Well, what it, what it is too is it's, it's not so much that, though it happens in the summer, but right now people are just pulling their cars up and turning their headlights on, like five or six cars and going out there and putting their radios on and making some noise. And it, it, it doesn't matter with our gates because you can park in the church parking lot and you can park over in the Girl Scout building and walk in and out.
It's been quiet over there for a while. Have you heard stuff around? It's picking back up?
It was quiet during COVID and remember we took the, the hoops down.
Oh, we did take them down.
My, my thing is, is that if we can't do anything, which I agree with you, we, we're limited on what we could do. Get rid of them.
Well, I do not want to put any money in.
I don't want to put the money.
Really in any of the recreation where.
Until we have a plan.
Where we potentially offset that or improve it through.
I totally agree.
Something else.
I totally agree.
But I do.
But doing nothing, I don't think is an answer either. And I think an easy answer solves everything.
I would like to understand more the severity and the frequency of that.
We do have the, the sheriff does a patrol three nights a week and they always concentrate, you know, on, on the parks and the soccer field and different areas. They make three to four stops a night in the area. And if they see people in there, they'll tell them. And if the gate's locked and they've come around our lot to park, they'll tell me, oh, we're going to tell you to ticket them, but they just come right back.
Here's my thing, and I kind of have this conversation with the email. I don't think having to kind of go there and just having to talk with them is what we need. I think if they're there and they get their warning that the next night is a trespass and then getting, otherwise it's useless. Just having them go there and say, hey.
Well, I think part of the problem is we don't. Again, it's public. Correct.
We can regulate the power and use.
With a fence and a game pass guard and it's just more money that we throw away.
Problem is not who's using the facilities. It's the hours of, the hours that they're using. Because it's spreading up. Because I'm sure what they're, just having people play on that field is probably not disturbing, but it's probably, what is it, loud music or they're just being disruptive?
Somewhere in my backyard.
What's, what's actually the root cause? What, what's, what's the issue? Is it just people playing after, after, you know, at dark? Or are they being disruptive? Is it language? Is it drugs?
The basketball courts themselves?
Yeah.
Rather cut it down, just put an inhibitor in the top of it so it can't be used except when we want it to be used.
But then you got, then you got to have staff coming out there.
That's right.
And then you run the same problem we have here, which you have to basically tell, you know, you have to kick some money off and there's potential for, you know, some type of interaction. That's the problem that you run into. Hold on, Brian wants to make a comment. And Brian, if you wouldn't mind just going up so we can hear you.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Upstaged you. We are looking at hiring Waldrop. I don't know if you know Waldrop Engineering. They're very high respected. Friend of mine is one of the planners there and we were talking about parks and recs, matter of fact. Fun Park and basically the amenities up by the pool, since the pool needs a lot of work done. So we reached out to them. We had a meeting this week, the staff and Waldrop. They're going to give us a game plan of what they think should go up there. One of the ideas was, is the fun park would go away. Everything would go up there. It was going to be behind fence. It'll be gated, then it gets locks up and we can regulate it. Staff and Chris can contest even with the police. We can't regulate that, folks. There's too many ways to get around it. You go either to the Girl Scout and what the problem is, is 10, 11 o'clock at night on Friday and Saturday nights, people are playing basketball, they're getting loud, they're cranking their music up. Homeowners are complaining, which I understand. We just call the police. The police, you know how it goes.
Yeah.
If they're there, they're there. If they're not, they're not. And pretty much during COVID, we took the rims down. After COVID, we'll say somewhat after COVID, I had one resident complain, wanted the hoops up, one.
They're not, they're not. About not being up?
Correct. One person because their child want to play basketball. Nobody else. So just give you a heads up. I mean, we are looking at, down the road, I have Waldrop come into you. If you prove the money, which you're going to tell me how much it costs for the study, but basically what we can do and eliminate that and put it all up in one location, then you fence it in with your tennis courts, your pickleball courts, your bocce ball courts and anything else that would go up there, then you can control who's coming and going.
I have one suggestion too, that could solve the problem and it could still provide a service to the communities. That fun park was originally established first for the playground and that playground was for like three to seven year olds.
I totally agree.
And then we put in the volleyball court, which is, you know, really a sand pit.
We escalated it.
We could take that, take those, lower them to seven feet. And then make that a fun park that is an adolescent park location. It's still providing an amenity. It's going to eliminate, I'd say, anything 13 years old up. Because adults aren't going to play on a seven, seven foot goal.
Unless they go over there and tear it up.
Right. But they're not adjustable. I mean, you, we literally would just lower them, cut them and.
Cut the poles.
Cut the poles, lower them. And, and if it's a low cost, then we're still providing a service. So we could say, hey, based on, on what we see, that fun park is designated for adolescents and we provide a service. And that could be, let's see if that helps.
I could go that a happy medium. Another suggestion would be take one court out. What I mean by that is you have full court right now. If I take it down to half court and leave one goal, nobody's playing full court games no more.
Well, then they're still playing half court. So you're, I, I agree with what you're saying. I think, I think you just lower them both. That way adolescents are going to play on half and half. Very rarely they're going to play full court. So you actually get more use out of those, out of that one court. Because then you've got two half court and that's what kids are going to play with.
Courts, by the way, that's all needs to be redone. It is broken up in numerous places. You will eventually run into safety issues unless that court.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I'm not willing to put money into resurfacing that court at this time. And that might be, so here's what I would do. I'd lower those right now because of the deterioration of the court. It's probably, yeah, it's a safety issue and the liability or risk is lower for, you know, maybe for the kids. And then the plan is to relocate and to, you know, enhance that at the future facility. So I would, and I would, I would literally make that motion now to lower those, lower those rims today. If that's what we need to do.
Well, just FYI, you just can't do that. That is one big pole goes up and out.
Well, you can just.
No, but you have to do, you have to cut that, you have to lower that down and re-weld it back in to make your seven foot.
So maybe cheaper literally to go spend 1,500 bucks and get two, two new poles.
You would take them out of the ground and put all brand new ones.
I mean, that, I would be willing to spend that.
I'd leave that to staff to make the decision which one's more cost effective, but I'd go along with the deal. Let's lower them down and get, get the kids that can drive cars and get over there and play a game and cause all the trouble. Get them out of there. We'll look at it tomorrow. I'll take my staff and we'll see what we can do, whether the.
Well, so I'll, I'll pull my motion back until, until next time. Or, or look.
I can send you an email. I authorize the staff to do it. You know what the idea is.
To make the modifications.
Make the modifications.
So I make a motion that you give staff the authority to make modifications to the fun park, basketball court, to transition from adult to adolescent size.
Then a 110 power line from the nearest circuit to the rim so that if they tried to, oh, can't do that.
I'm sure it's on DC, not AC, right?
We have a motion in a second.
Call the will, Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. Gepper?
Yes.
Mr. Guy? His.
We've lost him.
He lost him. Mr. Tinkle?
Yes.
Mrs. Walsh?
Thank you. Great. Next, next item I got, you alluded to it, that we're going to be getting somebody from maybe Waltrip coming in and starting to talk the process of what the vision is for the park. Correct, because there's a few surveys went around and if you've lived here long enough, you have one before. Gateway Sun even did one, the newspaper.
Yeah.
Just, just a question. Is this a service that is not available through our district agenda here?
Here, here's the issue. 20 years ago, when the pool was built, there was amenities that were supposed to go up to that pool. There was tennis courts, a basketball court, all kinds of things were promised to go at that pool. We've had two master plans.
My only question, not that, it's just, is why are we going to Waltrip instead of Tetra Tech? Is that something Tetra Tech can't do?
Waltrip, the reason I went to Waltrip is they do this for a living. They designed these for like Lennar and all the ever developments. This was just to reach out. They're even provide me a cost yet. I'm going to see what the cost.
My only question.
We're in discovery mode.
Yeah, they, they're not rec engineers. They're civil.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. That's not something that would fall within their normal scope.
So anyway, this is, this is coming. I, I just didn't want to do this fun part without having it into a continuation that we got a solution for a plan. The basketball courts, we can address separately from Waldrop. The Waldrop study was just to see.
Just initial discovery.
What we're knowing. Next, next one I got is where, where are we standing on trying to get somebody in here to talk and maybe staff's already done that capital reserve study for everything?
We haven't done anything yet. We can give you a napkin and tell you how much money you need to set aside.
I'm going to take and start getting a firm that has done this before on CDDs of the magnitude that we've got. I don't want somebody that does like I did today with my HOA type of guy. He's good for what he's doing, but I don't want him here, in here doing this one. This is detailed.
You want a full inventory?
I want an inventory and somebody to give us an order of magnitude of what it takes to do a capital reserve study for this place that's inclusive. I think we've done a pretty good job on utilities. I think on the nonutility side, we're weak as hell. And we need to have somebody tell us what we need to be doing.
And we can certainly do that. It is an unbudgeted expense. Yeah.
Get some names of people and have them come in and just give us an idea.
And I think that goes hand in hand with even some of the hot topics where, which is like the soccer field. You've got, you've got three buildings, you've got lights, you've got irrigation.
We got issues coming in.
All those things in this grand scheme of things, it would make, it makes sense.
Pelican has a nice product.
Then, then the, the next item I got is, is that the sidewalk project over on Gateway Greens, the, the painting on the cracks and the breaks is pretty well gone away. Have we got a timeline of when the guys are going to be coming in to do the resurfacing? I got a first quote, the second quote I got was double the first quote. I'm getting a third quote as directed. I can tell you it won't be the first quote. Because the second quote was for the person who wanted it. And I reached out to Matt Tyre for the first, the second quote, where he ended up reaching to Russ Burner, who provided him the information. So I know the guy at Russ, it's just do me a favor. Tell me what your quote's going to be. That PO is ready to go. If you want to announce, I can have them start it in February. They're ready to go. Okay, because if we don't, we need to get out there and probably spray paint some of those cracks. They're bad. They're bad. I just was trying to get an idea or timing. I have it ready to go for February, early March. They have the whole thing redone. It's waiting on this third quote, which I should have.
Okay.
Early next week. Differed into that. Last item I've got, and tell me if I've got an issue going out on a limb on this one talking, and that's the meter issue.
We don't have a final report yet that's been delivered to me, so we'll let the board know when that happens and more we're contemplating.
It was an email that I received and I don't know to what extent I can talk about it.
They're going to have a report, a final one done within the next two, next two weeks.
Yeah, that's, I would just leave it that.
I would say if you have any.
I understand what the issue is. I just didn't know how much I advise it.
If you have a specific question, I'd reach out to you.
I have nothing else.
Mr. Chairman, just one real quick. I'm sorry, back to what Brian was talking about with Waltrip. Do you have a PO with them because?
We have not discussed financials. We had an hour meeting.
Okay.
Is all it was. The gentleman said, before we get into that, he does other developments. He says, I can bring to you some ideas and tell you what it'll cost then go into engineering. So he's doing it as PR? Yes.
Okay, because we were going to hit the whole discussion before about the CCNA.
Correct.
Planning study activity for less than $35,000.
Yeah, he's doing it as PR.
Just kind of, I'll call it, conversations, conversations.
It was a get together. He's supposed to provide me numbers next week. And I was going to bring it to the board to present it and say, okay, here's what he suggested for the study. Then he can go into great detail once a PO has been cut. Because he has some great ideas about how to tie the walking trail into the FPL power easement. So you can.
Starting.
We need a plan.
We need a number for that.
That's, that is exactly why I'm waiting for them to have numbers. I'm coming to present that.
Okay, I just, I just have a couple of things. Hey, Chris, what is, what's going on, Griffin? What they're running.
They're running Century Link up to the high school.
Fiber. That's just to run it to the high school?
Yeah. County would not let them do it rush for the whole way.
Okay, have we had any issue with that so far?
Not so far, but you're in the county, you're in the county right away.
I'm glad you added that because at Gateway, it's always not so far.
Normally, normally Kenny would be in here saying that he's got somebody, you know, in the bushes during the time. Okay, I just want to make sure because I wasn't aware.
It's one, yeah, it's still open, no cones. All my entire irrigation system is completely shut out, which eventually when you get prepared, I'm going to be asking for it. You know?
Yeah.
It's a mess.
Who's doing the work?
Lambert, going for Century.
What are they putting in a two inch conduit?
It's actually.
Roads, he's doing a four. But normally they just direct bury that fiber.
Which is utterly ridiculous.
They direct bury the fiber? They're crazy. They are crazy.
I worked there for 20 years.
Look.
And I've seen, I've seen them lay, I've seen.
You have inside information.
I've seen them lay lines.
But it's not our roads.
Problem, they'll cut the line and run another one. It's, it's not our, not our road. So I guess I can't do anything, but that's stupid.
All right. So let me keep going. Really quick. So Brian, when you're talking to the Waltrip, one thing that I really think we should consider is even as part of its phase one, is having some type of administrative building there. We could talk about how grand it is or not, but.
What preliminary, this is strictly all preliminary. Staff, we went up there, we talked to Waldrop. We had the plans from 15, 20 years ago. Somebody else did this 10, 15 years ago.
I gave you a bunch of stuff.
Okay, there needs.
Because I took, I took the original, well, from 15 years ago, I did an augmented version 2.0 on that. So.
Chris gave me stuff, L's gave me stuff. Is it that Kellum's firm or something like that? Begins with a K. They're off the East Coast. Anyway, the proposal was, was for a rec center up there. What size square footage? We haven't determined.
Right, okay.
Where you would come in the door, you would have additional rooms for residents that want to play cards, whatever case may be. I mean, you know.
Yeah.
We're just not going crazy here, but he's going to give you some ideas. You would come in, the left would be over, you would go out the door, you would go into the pickleball courts, the tennis courts, the bocce ball courts and all that stuff. If you went out the door to the right, you would go over to the pool area and all that. Due to the fact the pool needs about $125,000, $150,000 worth of work to it. Tim had some great ideas to game. You take this little waiting pool out, you put a splash park with these big umbrellas and the guy says, I know exactly what you're talking about. You make another lap lane. So now it's getting down to the life of the pool. Is it better to just tear it out, build a new one, or go ahead and build a new one?
And resurface or?
No, you, resurface is the point. Then look in this cost analysis. I'm not.
All right, and we don't have to go into detail.
Anyway, it was one of those, it was like, do we resurface or just go new?
My, my hope, and I'm great, you've got that, because I think if there is a way to drive some revenue, it's renting some of the rooms and stuff, because that is a need in this community. But I want to make sure we have an administrative presence there. If we're going to spend all that money, we need, and if you're going to have pool attendants, they don't become pool attendants anymore. They become park attendants. You know what I mean?
I've asked and the staff, we highly recommend it. Give me three options. Just redo what's there, which we already know that. Give me a, blow my socks off that this is what Gateway wants compared to Timber Creek. And give me somewhere in the middle.
Yeah.
So when I have that, it should be next week. Did the heater on the pool get fixed? Yes, sir. What we had to do, heater went in, had a gas leak. We had a guy up there that day replace all the pipes from the meter end because they were rusting out. So as of today, we're all back to normal.
Thank you. Okay. And then the last thing, if Chris, if we can just, it did not be brought, partly. Next meeting, let's get a staffing update on openings and, and leaves.
Reports.
That's all. Any, anything last?
Motion adjourned.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn at 5:30. So we're 10 minutes behind projected schedule.
It looked like he was on a race.